Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you to a study session of November 18th. We'll be discussing the employee benefits consulting services. Council members, we have, I think, six people presenting or seven? Seven people presenting. Each person will have 15 minutes. So please, if you can write your questions and wait until the presenter is done, then you can ask their questions. And please take notes so you'll be able to vote whenever this comes on the agenda next time. Is there any further ado, we can go with Mr. Nelson first?
Fifteen minutes? Is that correct? Jeff?
Chad Hodgkinson. I'll kick us off. Jeff is with me as well, as well as Tamigo Duffy.
Oh, okay.
H O D K I N S O N. My first name is spelled oddly. It's with two Ds, actually. Chad with two Ds. It's not a typo.
Thank you, sir. Please go ahead.
Are we ready to roll?
Yes, please.
All right, great. Well, we want to thank you all for having us this evening again. My name is Chad Hodgkinson. I'm a senior area vice president with Gallagher, and I lead our public sector practice here in Michigan. I'll serve in the managing partner role for the Gallagher team if we were fortunate enough to earn your trust in your business for your benefit consulting needs. We put together a presentation that's in front of you to try to capture the most important points we felt like for you all and your constituents to know about Gallagher and how we would support you as a city. And I'll direct you to slide two, and I'm just going to roll through these very briefly, and then turn it over to my colleague Jeff. I'm starting with a global snapshot of Gallagher. These are numbers as of the end of 2024. They're big numbers that are on the page. We're arguably the second or third largest insurance brokerage in the world, depending on what data you look at. And as I say that, the reason I share that is it gives us unprecedented leverage and reach in the market to help you all negotiate terms in contracts that really are second to none. With that said, when I say that to public sector employers in Michigan, oftentimes they'll say, is Gallagher too big for us? And I always answer by saying, talk to your hundreds of colleagues who work with us today across the state of Michigan. There are many who are smaller than you. There are many that are your size, or many who are larger, and each one of them, we expect them to feel like they're our only client. And if you were to hire Gallagher, we would expect you to feel like you are our only client. The second or the third slide gets into our local presence here in Michigan. So we operate here locally in Michigan. We have an office in Bloomfield Hills. We have an office in Grand Rapids, an office in St. Clair Shores, and others around the state. But what I want you all to be aware of is that we operate a dedicated public sector practice team. So the team that's assigned to you, this is all we do all day, every day. We're living and breathing your world as a Michigan municipality. We're dealing with the challenges that you all are facing. We're actually consulting to almost 400 public sector employers across the state of Michigan. Client retention, we've lost three clients in 10 years, you all. That is second to none. I'll say it from this podium. I don't think you could have anyone stand at this podium and claim that kind of client retention. And it speaks to the level of service that we deliver to our clients. When our clients come, they stay because of the way that we deliver for them. In terms of market leverage, I talked about our reach. We were already the largest organization doing more of this benefit consulting work in Michigan public sector than anyone else. And then we just went through a recent acquisition of Assured Partners, which included Manquinn Vance, who also does a lot of this work in the state of Michigan. So us together, there is no entity doing more of this work. And then funding model expertise, whether you're fully insured, self-funded as you are today, or pooling, we truly are of the seven organizations you'll interview. We're the only one that can help you all explore pooling as a potential health insurance financing option. All right, and that's becoming more and more popular for organizations of your size as healthcare cost volatility has escalated. So we can talk more about that. I'm going to wrap by just sharing a quick example. I will say, when I talk about our reach and leverage, we recently onboarded a client from your existing broker or your existing partner. And just by way of example, for that organization, we were able to help them drive about 20% cost avoidance on their pharmacy program as we engaged with them without changing the end benefit to the employees, and I want to make that point very clearly, and multiple six-digit savings on their stop-loss contract as well. And so when I talk about our ability to come in and make immediate impact for the city, we've got demonstrated ability to do that. And this case study here on slide four demonstrates that as well. This is another public sector client of ours, offering four health insurance options to their employees. They received a 19.3% stop-loss increase this year. We took that out to the market. We renegotiated that and got it down to a 7.4% and a $90,000 credit from the existing carrier. But when we went out to the market, we were actually able to bring an alternative solution from a national player that's trusted in the stop-loss space to insure against those catastrophic claims that ultimately resulted in a 0.3% overall decrease in stop-loss costs, a 1.1% overall increase on their health insurance program. So I hope this gives you a little bit of example of how we engage in the work that we do. I'm going to bring Jeff to the podium. He's going to explain his role and share a little bit more.
Thanks, Chad. Mr. Fisher, I was able to email the presentation to you, in case you're able to pull that up. Appreciate being here. My name is Jeff Nielsen. I'm an area vice president with Gallagher. And I'm going to bring 35 years of experience in an employee benefits space to the City of Dearborn Heights team, if we're selected, as your lead consultant, helping with strategic advice, managing our team that delivers service on a day-to-day basis. As Chad talked about in some of what we do, we don't just come in twice a year and have a strategy meeting and then deliver their annual healthcare renewal and walk away. We're here on a regular basis, meeting the needs of your human resources team and others from the city to make sure that you're getting that strategic advice all year round. We come in, we listen, we ask the right questions, we understand the strategy that the city has for the importance of your employee benefit plans, and then we help you meet those objectives. As Chad talked about, given our size, one of the things it does is it brings us unmatched expertise in the industry. So when we come into a client and they ask us a question about employee benefits or compensation or retirement, there is no need or opportunity that we can't help a client with because at Gallagher, we've got an expert to help us with that. From a dedicated pharmacy practice, from a well-being practice, from our voluntary benefit practice and others, we've got experts that we rely on and always bring to the table to help our clients whenever they might need us. The other thing we're really good at is assisting groups with technology. So everybody has a benefit platform that they rely on. Some of them are really good, some of them are not so good. But at the end of the day, it's a pretty complex world. Creates challenging opportunity and challenging decision makings. And again, we're lucky to have a team of experts that assists with that listening and understanding of what's working today, what would you like to work better, and help with that process. And so we bring them to the table for the City of Dearborn Heights as well. As Chad did, I'd like to share a story about a recent opportunity that we had that I helped lead. Again, similar to the City of Dearborn Heights, we took over earlier this year a public employer in the state of Michigan that was similar in your size. And this is on page six of the presentation. At that time, they were insured with Blue Cross Blue Shield in Michigan, which we're all familiar with, as well as using a separate self-funded prescription drug program. When we were asked to come in and take a look at their program, their broker had presented to them a 25% rate increase. Not unfamiliar to many public employers around the state this year. As we looked at their data, we realized that the increase that was required based upon their information was actually higher, 33%, something that that public entity simply could not afford and could not afford to pass along to their employees. So we took a look. In addition to that, their pharmacy being self-funded was not covered by stop-loss, meaning they were at risk for all of the claims exposure, which last year had increased by over 55% from the year prior. Add to that program requirements that caused a lot of disruption with their membership, and they were really looking for a different alternative. We looked at what they had in place. As Chad said, we were able to look at the self-funding, fully insured, and pooling to give them a myriad of options to consider. At the end of the day, pooling provided the right answer. It simplified the plans, it lowered their overall premiums, and it created long-term financial stability for the public entity. That employer moved to the pool, a group of over 230-plus public sector employers here in the state of Michigan that worked together to provide better healthcare and more affordable prices to their employees. The pool's offer was 33% below the renewal that was presented, resulting in over a quarter million dollars in savings to the public employer. It also simplified the plan design, eliminated member disruption. At the end of the day, when we went through open enrollment, we had employees thanking the employer for making healthcare simpler, easier, and continuing to make it affordable. I'm going to introduce my friend Tamigo. She's going to come up. She's going to take us through the rest of the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Tamigo Duffy. My role is a senior client manager with the Gallagher team, specifically on the public sector team. I am sitting basically between Jeff as a producer and a day-to-day contact. So my core responsibilities is the primary lead as a point of contact and to ensure your client satisfaction, and also basically just make sure that we are having the proper strategy and process that meets your needs throughout the year. So as Chad had said, and Jeff also, that we don't meet just twice a year. We are there for you at all times, no matter how many times or whatever the issue is or you need us for. I also am responsible for strategic consulting. So when we come to sit at your table with your HR teams and your other leaders within the organization, we are benefit advisors that helps to identify gaps and trends and all of those other financial impacts that can help you make decisions that are best suited for your needs for the City of Dearborn Heights. I want to talk to you a little bit about page seven. So page seven is kind of just some information on how we see ourselves as different from other brokers. We have a proven track record. As Chad had mentioned, we've only lost three cases in the last 10 years. We want you to view us as an extension of your team, not just your benefit brokers. So if your generalist needs us, if your payroll director needs us, we're here for you to help you navigate through any employee benefit-related matters. We pride ourselves on our high-touch support, meaning that you have access to my cellphone 24 hours a day if you need to. All Gallagher team members, you would have access to if you were a client, to our cellphones, which is not common in our market.
That's not good.
And I pay my own bill. We have a comprehensive assistance as it relates to compliance and communications, open enrollment, billing, anything that you would need handled, we handle it very strategically, and we make sure that we do a phenomenal job for you and your employees. I'd also like to share a case study. The case study that I'm going to share is specific to a client employee that had a pretty big crisis in a healthcare matter. They needed some care after hours, which created a need for costly medication. They were not able to get the medication filled, so they reached out directly to someone's cellphone. And they were able to get in touch with a Gallagher team member. Gallagher team member also was able to reach out to our carrier partners, and we were able to get that expedited after hours and approved for that particular medication. Once it was approved, Gallagher also reached out to the pharmacy and made sure that that member was taken care of, just not on their own, to kind of make sure that they were able to get the dispensing that they needed on that particular medication. So in hindsight, that was like a very big deal for that member. They were able to get what they needed quickly. The communication with Gallagher and that employee stayed consistent. Their HR team was also updated throughout the process. The end result was the employee received the medication, as I said, and the employee felt very supported and valued. And the HR team was also elated that we were able to step in after hours for a critical need. Turn it back over to Chad. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's so hard in 15 minutes, you all. So this is such a complex topic and so much ground to cover, but we really did want to try to capture those salient points about what we believe makes Gallagher truly different. Again, this is what we're focused on all day, every day, you all. And so we would obviously love to partner with you all on your benefit program and to serve as your benefits consultant. I don't know if there are any questions that we have time to take or if that...
Yep, we're going to open it up to questions.
Thank you very much. Council members, any questions? Amazing presentation, by the way. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe I'll start. I know you mentioned a couple of times you take pride that you only lost three case clients in the past 10 years. Do you mind me asking why?
No, it's a reasonable question, and honestly, it's a really easy answer. In this industry, it is a relationship-driven industry. That is the reality. And in each of those cases, there was a change in leadership, where the leadership had a prior relationship with a different broker. And so there was really nothing for cause, genuinely. It was a situation where they had a relationship they wanted to work with, and that's where the business went.
Excellent. My second question is, sorry. You said you'll have a team, like a team assigned.
Yes.
At Dearborn Heights. How many members in that team?
So it's the individuals you've met here tonight. So myself is the managing partner. Jeff is the lead consultant. Tamigo is the senior client manager. There would be another individual behind the scenes called a client associate that's helping support the team behind the scenes, collect information as needed and that sort of thing. And then a client financial analyst as well, that's managing the claim data behind the scenes and supporting the team for those analytics and getting out to market and those sort of things. And frankly, then there's a host of individuals behind all of us in the organization that are helping make all of this run. And so it's a very deep bench.
Thank you very much. You had something?
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. You're with... I don't have my list in front of me, but you gave a price out, right?
Yes.
I just want to be able to place this here because I know we also have... I've asked the unions to be on here. I did ask them to be emailed to, but I don't know. They said they haven't received it. But I know we have Officer Seneer. He is here with us. He's the president of the patrol officers. I think we have somebody from Sergeant Campbell, who's here with the command officer. We have everybody's favorite president, Phil Hall. And so they're also here. They want to be able to ask some questions because, look, it really does come back to the employees that have a very strong relationship. And I remember I speaking with Phil, our battalion chief, the president of their union, who said, "The company that we currently use has had the capabilities to be able to find ways to fix things, do like arbitration or save us money." So while the number is, you know, Gallagher comes in at 114,000. Base bid price is 69 plus...
Nope.
So your initial price coming in at 114,000?
Yeah, I'm not sure where that came from. So we submitted a bid of 69,700. What we essentially did was you presented to us that you had two sets of commissions coming from your stop-loss with Blue Cross Blue Shield on your self-funded plan and from your Medicare for all of your retirees. And that totaled, in your bid request, 69,700. And what we proposed is that we would do the work for that amount of money in the first year and then look at, you know, how things went. But that's our end price. No additional cost to what you're already paying today. And those fees are all coming through commissions that are built into your Blue Cross products. So there's no direct bill to the City of Dearborn Heights for our services.
Okay.
And then the one additional piece was that you did ask in there, if we'd be able to handle your EBIX payment at $25,000 annually, we could take that money directly from the city and help facilitate that payment to EBIX for your benefit platform. One of the things we do in looking at new benefit platform technologies, if it made sense, and that's one of the things the city wanted to look at, is that we have great success leveraging vendor relationships. So typically with your voluntary benefits and other ancillary carriers to get them to actually fund those benefit platforms. So it's very often that we're able to transition to a new platform, and again, at no cost to the public employer. We know that's incredibly important in your space.
I hope that helps, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
Madam, do you have something?
No, no, no. Go ahead.
We're just going to... Yes, you have something?
You mentioned pooling. Two questions. Who would we be pooled in with? Then what if, like, part of the pool, let's say part of the pool is City of Detroit? You lose City of Detroit.
Yeah.
Doesn't that mean our costs go up?
Yeah, two really good questions. So the first question, who is in the pool? Starting this year, it was over 230 public sector organizations from all over the state of Michigan. It's a mixture of municipalities, public schools, municipal organizations like community health and so on. You can actually, we can provide an entire list of membership. It's all transparent. It's actually, the risk structure is managed in such a way that they've had the lowest trend of any comparable health plan. When you look at the average rules of Blue Cross Direct, Priority Health, you know, HAP, you name it, the pool has had the lowest five- and 10-year average renewal as you compare to all of those plans. And so they're structured in such a way, frankly, that when organizations join, they don't leave. And so the scenario you talked about, they're also underwritten to operate stably for the group as a whole to where one member isn't going to throw things out of whack one way or another. But it's a reasonable question.
So because of their size.
Right.
The pool's size.
They can handle those ebbs and flows. They've been around for 20 years now, so they've got a long track record of proven performance. So yeah, that size of over 20, I want to say there are over 25,000 employee lives, member lives. You could almost multiply that by three, the two and a half to three.
All right. Thank you.
Our honorable mayor mentioned something about $114,000. And then you mentioned 69,700 proposed for the first year. What is the average of how much that goes up in the second, third, fourth year?
Well, that's dependent on whether or not the city believes that we're doing good work. What we did put in the proposal is that we feel like, given the complexity of the city and your size, 89,000 is the appropriate amount. But we know that you're already paying 69,700, and we want to prove ourselves to you. We'll deliver on that. And if you feel like that's what we're worth in year two and year three, we'll continue to do the work for that amount of money. So that's our commitment.
Council chair?
Mayor.
So I don't know if... What we have here for Gallagher is 94,700 for the base bid amount, and then option two would be $114,000.
So you're adding in the $25,000 for the EBIX platform? That's what gets you to the 94.
Okay.
Our direct fee that's going to come to Gallagher is 69,700, which is the commissions that are in place today. That additional 25,000, we would direct bill the city for in order to pay for your EBIX service, as we understand.
Okay. I get it now. Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much.
And it is our understanding that's the current arrangement today, that the city is actually paying that $25,000 for EBIX. That was our understanding. So we just want to be very clear that our proposal to you all of the city is a net cost neutral compared to what you're currently paying just with the added resources and capabilities that we've walked through with you today.
Council chair?
Thank you. You know, I'm raising a young family of five kids, and one of the things I like to do is be proactive and preventive maintenance. Do you guys offer some kind of program, or is that through the carrier, that a program that would be, you know, as far as keeping your health up, looking out for certain red flags?
Right, right. It is a statistical reality that if we are engaged in preventive care to manage our health, 80% of the population, we would deem to be healthy in any given group, and 20% are having healthcare need. And that's the way this world of insurance works. 80% of us are funding the 20, and sometimes we find ourselves in that group of 80, and we're happy to fund because when we're the 20, in the 20, we want to be the ones who there's funding for, right? But across the board, we want to keep those that are at that healthy status at that healthy status and those who have chronic conditions in management of those chronic conditions. So one of the best ways we've found to do that is through a solid communication strategy throughout the year to get to the workforce and their dependents to say, "Here are the preventive services and resources that are available to you at no cost. We want you to take advantage of those. It's good for you now. It's good for you in the future, both from a quality of life perspective, a personal cost perspective," and helping them create that linkage. Utilization drives cost. It's not magic. It is a direct relationship. And so as we all get engaged in the management of our health, we can all be engaged in controlling the cost of health long-term. So I don't know if that answer helps or not, if you have any follow-up with that.
Yeah, it seems like you answered the question there. You do offer something. The word "communication" came up several times, and I'm a real good fan of communication.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, this campaign, right, Chad?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
One other question. When you're talking about the, I think, the software program, are you saying Epic?
EBIX is the system you're using today, E B I X.
Okay.
That's the system you're using for benefit administration. So that's where employees would go in, make their enrollment elections. It's how you're transmitting those elections to your carrier partners today. And what Jeff was explaining is there are a host of those systems in the market. EBIX frankly is a less common system. And in past conversations with the city, our understanding was that was a point of challenge or a pain point for the city. We've helped a lot of public sector organizations like you evaluate their technology solution for benefit administration and move to something that is less costly or free, quite frankly. We have a lot of no-cost options for you all, where we could get rid of that 25,000, make it a system that's very approachable for both your employees and your staff, and be a backroom support to that. And so there are some really straightforward solutions to that challenge.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. Madam Claire, would you please unmute President's news?
Good evening, council members and Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
I just want to first state that, Mr. Mayor, I do believe the jury's still out on who the favorite union president is, but that's a conversation for another time.
Favorite president, union president.
Yeah, Phil is my favorite. Sorry.
That's okay. I do apologize to everybody. I was unaware of this meeting tonight, so I am kind of bringing it, getting brought in last minute. I'm going to have the same three questions to every presenter tonight. First and foremost, how are the employees going to save in this potential switch while still keeping the same quality of healthcare that we currently enjoy? Secondly, what are the savings to the city itself in our current financial situation? That is a primary goal for all of us. And thirdly, if we are not going to have any cost savings, what is the benefit of switching from the quality of service that we already have? So those will be my main, my three main questions to every presenter tonight just because I don't have the adequate information and the proper research on any of the companies presenting tonight. So thank you very much.
That's okay. I just don't want to get in the middle of the favorite president conversation. That's what I want to stay out of. No, those are three really good questions. So the first question I would say is, what we're doing all day, every day for Michigan public sector employers is helping them to identify cost efficiencies in their program without impacting negatively the value of the benefit itself that the end user is experiencing at the pharmacy counter when they go to the doctor. Cost shifting is a very real thing in this industry. Anybody can raise a deductible or add more out-of-pocket expense, but to your point, that shifts more cost to your members. The example that I gave of the group that we transitioned recently, genuinely, just through tearing into the pharmacy contract, renegotiating that contract, and eliminating inefficiencies in that contract, didn't change anything for the end user. Same co-pays, same list of covered drugs. But it squeezed 20% cost out of the drug program that was flowing to the pharmacy benefit manager. And all we did was direct that back toward the employer health plan. That means savings for the employer. It means savings for the employee as well. Same thing with the stop-loss example that I gave. Through our market leverage, you all need to know, as Gallagher had mentioned, our size and our local presence. Where our size really comes into play is managing national relationships. Where our size really comes into play is managing national relationships with credible stop loss partners with pre-negotiated contract terms that are to the benefit of our clients. That's the power that we bring to the table. And so there are terms that are, you know, are protecting your risk and driving down the cost associated with that. So multiple six figures is what we'll be bringing to the table. And so I will just tell you, our track record with each public sector employer that we onboard is we invariably find cost efficiency opportunities without diminishing the level of coverage. Did I grab all three of your questions?
Well, I, I believe so, you know, and again, based on your numbers and everything, is there going to be a cost savings to the city as far as the, the fees or anything? Or are you just projecting that in the future, based on what you can provide, we will be able to lower cost and health insurance itself?
Yeah, I think it's both ends. So the, the direct fee would be unchanged, right? So that would be a cost neutral. You would certainly get additional tools, resources and market leverage if you were to partner with Gallagher. So I would argue there's a increased ROI there. When it comes to the $25,000 Ebix fee, we have a lot of confidence that we can wipe, take that off the table. It would require a system transition, you all, but we'd be alongside that with you, helping you to, to determine what the right technology is for you, make you the owner of that technology and all the data that's in it. And that's a really important part of this. You will have agents talk to you about placing free technology, but what they don't share is that you won't be the owner of that technology. And if you want to fire them, you have to leave that technology as well. We make sure that that disruption doesn't occur for the technology. And so I do think there's a $25,000 savings opportunity through partnering with Gallagher on that technology piece.
So thank you very much, Mr. Hotkinson, Mr. Nelson and Ms. Toffey. Thank you for your time. Great presentation.
Thank you for having us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fisher. Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Thank you, guys. Matching suit. I like it. Counselor Chair.
Yes. Right now? Good evening. How are you?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Men and gray?
Yes. Thank you so much for having us.
Uh, thank you for being here. And you are Mr. Moore?
Uh, Mr. Moore.
Mr. Moore.
And Michael Mueller.
Nice to meet you.
And we prepared a, a presentation for you. We didn't know we had 15 minutes, so we'll try and, we'll try and get through it. And I know you have some questions at the end, so we look forward to those as well.
Please, go ahead.
I'll introduce myself first. My name is Michael Mueller, Director of Operations for TMR Agency. 15 years of experience serving municipal clients exclusively.
Kevin Moore with TMR and Associates, again, 15 years of experience as well in the industry. Just wanted to say as well, I grew up in, in the city of Dearborn Heights, at Cherry Hill and Beach Daily. Spent my whole life here. Grew up at Cherry Hill and Beach Daily, graduated from Kinlak Elementary, Riverside Middle School and Crestwood High School. So I just want to start by thanking you all for allowing us to be here today. It's a pleasure, especially growing up in this community, to be able to, to have an opportunity to come in front of you today and, and speak about our services that we truly care deeply about and, and value each and every one of our clients as if they were family, much like this community.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Yeah, wouldn't mind, I'd like to get started. Section one is about us. So I'm sorry, your team. This will be the team that would serve Dearborn Heights. So good people makes everything better. Me and Kevin personally will be on your account throughout the whole process, the whole timeline. My father was the owner of the company, started it 93 with the goal and intentions of serving public entities specifically. He saw a certain need in the benefits industry and a certain animal being that municipal public sector that was different than the private sector. So he's structured the whole business around the compliance, the budgeting, the laws behind public center. And we followed in his footsteps and became experts ourself. You also have Senior Account Manager, Benefit Tech Analyst, and actually two Senior Account Managers as well as us onboard. About us, so we're probably one of the only agencies that's actually located in Wayne County. We've been downtown Detroit for the whole period since 93. We've been exclusively serving municipals in southeast Michigan particularly. You know, we, we technically come in as the underdogs, right? We have big conglomerates that we face. We have consolidation in our industry of agencies getting bought. And so behind some of our processes is, is more of a, a niche handholding. You have our cell phones. You know, we have a 24-hour response time that we get back to you. And we really take pride in our clients and our service models. So we service all aspects of the employee benefits from fully insured to self-insured to all the vehicles, to the post 65 group healthcare. So the Medicare participants, your dental plans, your vision plans, all the open enrollments. So we do all group meetings. We have online administration, online software with Employee Navigator. We have paper or onsite enrollment, the administrative support. So we do all the administrative support through our office, all the public acts. We do the dependent audits, plan audits. So in coming through all of the, the client experience that we have, we like to think that we're a well-rounded, full-service insurance agency. So there, there's really no saying no. When someone from the city calls us and asks us for a favor or to do something or help us with a project, we work day and night, weekends. So we like to think of our, our agency as an extension of your HR department to help support the employees and the retirees. So once again, you have our personal contact information. We have a 24-hour response time for our service. Our HR administration and tools and resources are all bundled together in our, in our fee that we propose. We have a dedicated HR hotline for different compliance issues, the day-to-day administrative stuff, the billing, the membership, the claims. So we take all of that in-house and off of the hands of the HR department so they can get back working for the city's needs. Management and transitional programs, we help guide you through those. And employee education and communication, that's a big part of, of everyone in, in the city paying for these benefits, which cost a lot of money, making sure the employees know their benefits, know the resources that are available to them. And, and we do that by quarterly meetings, group open room meetings, one-on-one meetings. If someone needs to call our office for some private, private questions, we handle those one-on-one. Moving off to Kevin.
So before we head into section three, I just wanted to expand a little bit on, on some of the things that Michael was saying and kind of addressing some of the, the other issues or, or maybe commitments or things that, that you may hear from our competitors in this room and where I truly believe we set ourselves apart is, speaking personally, the promises that we make in this room, we will be a part of your team, whether if, if we were as fortunate to earn your business, we will be here next year and the year following. Unlike some of the other presentations, you will be transitioned from a sales team. The people that come in here make promises to you today and make pitches to you today. We'll transition you to a service team, okay? Where you will no longer, those promises that were made, they'll no longer be a part of that, that process. I just wanted to, to make that clear. Like I said, our, our agency, we structure ourselves as family and we hold ourselves accountable to make sure that the promises that we make, we come through and deliver for our family. So our public, our public sector experience, what, what Michael had mentioned is, is our, our whole agency is structured around servicing public sector groups because there is this unique need. And yet there's an additional service aspect, whether it's collective bargaining units, the Michigan Public Acts, union negotiations, making sure that everybody feels a part of that process is what makes a municipality much different than a private sector company. And, and our proven track record, our 97% client retention. In the 15 years I've been in the business, I don't, we, we have not lost a public sector client. I encourage each and every one of you to, to reach out to the references on our NR RFP and ask them, you know, how, how available are they to you? Can you call Kevin or Michael on a weekend, on a Saturday night at 10 o'clock at night because a police officer is having an issue with a claim and he's at the hospital? I can personally tell you, without naming any one of those, those three client on our references, they would, they would vouch by that statement. Moving on to Public Act 106. So one of the other things that we do is every three years with PA 106, public employers are required to, to go out to bid for their vendor partners. So not, not your insurance broker consultant, but the insurance carriers in place. So we would actually help create a customized RFP for you, as well as create a collaborative timeline, working alongside the purchasing department, establish that RFP and vendor timelines, making sure that every, all those carriers meet those monitoring timelines. And then in turn, every, all those vendor partners are going to give you a, a hundred-plus page RFP response. What we do is we take those and simplify them down to a five, six-page summarized report so that you can quickly, effectively make an accurate and concise decision without, without killing valuable time and resources to the city. And then on, on Public Act 152, so with Public Act 152, this limits how much a public employer can pay towards employees' healthcare. So, and there's two ways you can go about it. You can either do the hard cap limits, which is a defined annual contribution, or there's the 80/20 contributions, which basically it's 80/20, 80% being the employer contribution, 20% being the employee. So each and every year for all of our clients, we evaluate the difference between the two, seeing what that impact would be. Understanding that the hard cap, PA 152 hard cap limits, it's a broken system. In no way, shape or form is that public, are those hard cap limits keeping pace with what your standard medical and R X trend renewals are going to be on a year-over-year basis. And what you see is eventually over time, the employees begin to get squeezed, okay? And then they're, every year they're contributing more and more and more. And that 10% renewal isn't a 10% increase to those employees' contributions. Those employees' contributions will go up 40, 50%.
Yeah.
And it's, it's challenging, you know, for, for having someone on, whether it's a, a fixed income or a police officer, a firefighter, to tell them that their, the cost, when the cost of everything in their life is increasing, the cost of their healthcare is going to go up on a per paid deduction 50%, it's challenging. And PA 152 allows you to do some unique things that a lot of brokers don't pay attention to. And that's one, resloping the rates. This is, is, has a minor effect, but essentially the, the rates that insurance companies give you, give to you, do not reflect the same sloping factors that State of Michigan puts out. And, and they're just not proportionate. And all, what happens is a couple contract ends up paying more than a family contract. When the family contract is the most expensive contract. Or you'll have a single contract that's under, a family contract that's under, and then the family, or a couple contract is paying $200 annually. It doesn't make sense. So we realign those and proportionally align them so that those illustrative rates from, let's say, Blue Cross Blue Shield in your example, align with those State of Michigan hard cap sloping factors. And then in addition, we also unbundled the rate. So something that PA 152 allows you to do is unbundle the rate. So your rates, that blue, the renewal that Blue Cross Blue Shield gives you is a, is a combined rating. So what they do is you have active and retirees built into that rating, okay? And, and typically what happens is retirees, it's, it's, it's just the truth. Because of the demographic, the age demographic, their utilization is typically higher. So what you have is you have basically active employees that are subject to that hard cap limits, kind of offsetting that cost of that retiree healthcare as well. But what they allow you to do is unbundle that rate. And, and where you basically, you have a lower rate for the active than you would for that retiree population because that active population is subject to PA 152 hard cap. And so that is something we do intern, internally in our office, as well as a multitude of different things that we'll go over here in the next, next couple of slides to help contain and maintain costs. So one of the other things as well is that, that we like to take part in is, is the collective bargaining process, knowing how important your bargaining units are to the, to the city. Making sure that the bargaining units feel like they have a seat at the table, that we're not working against them, that we're working together as one. And that's one of the things that I can say personally that we do with each and every one of our clients is sit down with the bargaining units and make them feel a part of the process. And it, it helps because all of us, all, the, the city as a whole, every active employee with, with the way the hard cap's moving versus where your renewals are trending, all have a kind of, a piece of the stake in here. And working with, our experience is working with ASME, MATE, POAM, COAM, IAFF, the Teamsters, Plumbers, Roofers, Michigan Building Trades and Pipe Fitters. Onto section four, which is cost-saving solutions. Our approach when the renewals, it's, it's a data-driven approach. So with data-driven reporting, claims analysis and review, trend and cost projection justification. And our, our goal is essentially to identify specific cost drivers. What's driving the cost of your plan? Is it, is it diabetes utilization? Once you identify these specific cost drivers, we can create a customized solution to help reduce or manage those costs so that in turn you can create a, a more gradual increase on a year-over-year basis. One of the things as well is, is negotiating with these carriers. So a lot of, a lot of insurance agencies, they'll tell you that they're negotiating with these insurance carriers, but in all reality, it, it gets left off the table a lot of time. And, and it's something that we take personally in our office, whether it's, it's getting implementation or implementation credits, rate relief or multi-year rate guarantee. So because you guys are self-funded client, this is something we did for, for one of our larger clients as well, Macomb County, is we negotiated a three-year administrative rate guarantee. It resulted in approximately, so one point, approximately 1.5 million, about $1.5 million in savings over three years. We would also provide alternative solutions, whether that's as a set, as an additional options. Or sometimes it's something as simple as there's too many options. We need to consolidate this and make it a simpler process, a simpler plan offering for our employees. Illustrative rate composition, what I, which I talked about in that last slide, which is resloping, unbundling. And then plan design comparisons, supplemental benefit options. So creating additional benefit programs that can help offset employees' deductibles out of pockets and, and utilization, their spend through utilization. And then stop loss analysis. This is something I wanted to, to just take a moment to explain because looking at the, at your RFP and the stop loss commissions, they seemed a little higher than usual. Not that the, the percentage is higher than usual, but I don't know what the actual premium is, but based upon what the standard commission is, that stop loss premium seems abnormally high. And one of the things we do each and every year, and this needs to be done each and every year. So with a self-funded medical plan, you're, you're paying claims, you're acting as the insurer. And with a stop loss analysis, this is the one component of your self-funded medical plan that is an actual insurance policy that helps protect you in the instance that Blue Cross Blue Shield's claims projections are higher than, than expected or specific members' claims are higher than expected. And as claims change, pharmacy changes, new drugs come on the market, new gene therapies, biosimilars come on the market, you have to look at this because year over years, these things start to change and they have a profound impact on your claims. So you want to make sure that you're not overinsuring because at a certain point, if you have that stop loss, that stop loss premium makes up too much of your overall cost, you're overinsuring and you're, you're not benefiting in the aspect of what self-insurance is all about, which is inheriting that risk from the insurance company. Because at a certain point, if you're not taking any risk in a self-funded medical plan, you're fully insured.
Just gonna give you 30 seconds, sir, just to wrap it up.
Okay.
You know, might we can move to questions?
Yeah, you guys want to go ahead and just ask some questions?
You know what, I'll start. Can we share their bed or? You know what? I'll start, uh, can we share their bed or we shared the bed? What was their bed?
Yeah, their bid was ninety three thousand dollars.
Ninety three thousand dollars.
And you didn't apply for, well, can I ask a couple of questions? Then maybe it'll help you.
Sure.
Uh, thank you gentlemen for being here. I know Kevin did go to, uh, did grow up here in the city of Dearborn Heights. His father also represents the Teamsters. They grew up in a union household. I do appreciate understanding that. You know, usually when you make a lot of these decisions, it goes back to like what I said earlier, my favorite, uh, battalion chief is on there and, and favorite president of the fire department is Phil Hall and he's somebody that has a lot of questions as well. And usually it's hard. It's hard when you're switching from a company that you've used for fifteen, twenty years. Somebody like myself that grew up, I, I worked in a private sector where I worked for this big company and I was making this money and I would have to like sell some of these clients and things that I didn't, I went out and branched off to myself, opened up a mortgage company and was able to offer the same, uh, benefits. And I had this conversation with HR. I was able to offer the same benefits versus what my other company was at a quarter, a half of the price or even more, right? I was able to save clients X amount of money. Uh, but I see here TMR, they put this part where there was like twenty five thousand dollars for, tell me what it was again?
Ebix, the platform.
So would you guys also be operating your Ebix, whatever that, because you guys didn't apply for option, you put NA for option two on your bid. I don't know if you're familiar or if you remember what that was.
Oh, as far, as far as keeping the Ebix system that you currently have?
Yeah.
We would be able to manage that system.
And it still would fall under the ninety three thousand?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Well, because this person said we'll do ninety two, but if you, we do your Ebix, it'd be one nineteen. You're saying I'll be at ninety three, I'll keep and I'll still operate in Ebix. I'm not going to charge you the addition on twenty five thousand.
Correct.
And, and in addition to that too, so we offer to all of our clients at no charge Employee Navigator. And when I say no charge, it, it goes much further than no charge to the client. There's no charge for the implementation, the management or the build of that system on a year over year basis. And we do not outsource that. We have our own firm within our office, our own individuals in the office that manage those carrier feeds. So that when employees make elections in, let's say Employee Navigator, that those are transmitted directly to the insurance companies so that there's no enrollments missed, there's no manual data entry, that everything is seamless.
You guys recommend a different platform than Ebix?
Yeah, so I would, yes.
Yeah, yeah, just, just because, you know, we've vetted, you know, ten, uh, enrollment in administrative platforms, you know, over the years since they became more popular, right? And we started with another one called Maxwell Health. We gave it some time, then we evaluated another one, and now Employee Navigator seems to be the most user friendly, uh, for, for employees, right? Because employees are going to be logging on, they're going to be electing their benefits, they're going to be, uh, counting on.
So what's it called again?
Employee Navigator.
Employee Navigator.
And it is the, it's the largest, it's the largest online benefit enrollment in, in, um, benefit enrollment and.
What's that cost for that?
There's no cost.
No cost.
As I said, we, we inherit all that cost.
Can I ask one more question? What other companies, what other municipalities can you, I know, I didn't see it on your reference page. I don't have the full fill out. I'm so sorry. Our, our website actually crashed. I think it's back up. Can you tell me what companies or what municipalities or what organizations like government organizations that you guys currently represent?
Yeah. So just a few notable ones, LaCom County, City of Warren, City of Roseville, we do Wayne County Community College, LaCom County Community College, Oakland County Community College, City of River Rouge, City of E Course. Those are just off the top of my head, Roosevelt Public Schools.
And you said it's only, you only serve public sector, right?
It, it makes up a, of, of over eighty percent of our book of business, yes.
And so one of, one of our different, differentiators, we believe is the comprehensive suite of technology that we offer at no additional charge, right? We're, we're not trying to nickel and dime you two dollars per employee per month for this, you know, five dollars for this. So, so including an online enrollment platform, we also have, um, the HR platform that they have for any compliance issues, right? We have the learning management system for your employees. If you'd like to put them through training for new employees, different modules that they'll have to complete to be hired. Um, so that, that's one of the things we pride.
So let me get this straight. So it's ninety three thousand minus the twenty five. So your bid is at sixty eight, if I'm understanding correctly or no?
No, 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 no.
So ninety three plus twenty five?
Let me give you an example. The last bidder that just came in here said ninety four thousand seven hundred, right? This is all public records. So I'm, I don't know why anybody's not in the meeting. But if you want us to continue to run the, the system, it's an additional twenty five thousand. So for example, Gaylord said I'll come in at a hundred and fourteen thousand.
Council chair?
That wasn't the case.
No, council chair. My question to you is for the ninety three thousand, is that the first year or is that throughout?
Throughout. We guaranteed that over the lifetime of our.
Lifetime of the.
So I believe it's a five-year contract if I, if I remember correctly, we guaranteed it for five years, I believe, in our RFP responses.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. That's a good question, Tom.
One, one other thing I'd like to add, if you wouldn't mind, is, is part of our differentiator from our other agencies, because there's a lot of competition that we deal with. And as we all know, sitting in this room, that the hard cap, healthcare is far outpacing the hard cap, right? Which is putting pressures on the employees and having them contribute to, to health insurance where they, where they haven't before. So what we do on a weekly basis is evaluate all different types of products, right? Products that can be helpful, products that can be valuable to your employees. And recently we've came across, um, a very, very nice product that we're doing in-depth analysis and presenting it to our clients now, um, is a self-insured medical reimbursement program, which through the IRS allows some tax advantages, um, with, with implementing a certain wellness program, you know, which is also compliant with the IRS HIPAA, ERISA compliant. Um, and, and we're showing that this can not only increase the employee's paycheck bottom line, but also as a municipality with your population of employees could put over six figures in your pocket on an annual basis. This product takes a little bit of time to explain. So if we could be able to do it tonight, but we would be, you know.
It's, it's savings through, through payroll taxes.
Thank you. But you know what? Let me go back to the, your bid. So it's ninety three thousand, include the twenty five thousand of Ebix or this is, so if you don't use Ebix, your bid is sixty eight thousand? That's what you're saying?
No, no. So our, our bid is, our bid is not, our bid's ninety three thousand. Whether you use it or you, or whether you continue to use Ebix or, to be honest with you, I would be surprised if, if you went through and did a presentation with Employee Navigator, if you didn't make that change as well.
Because Ebix costs twenty five thousand. So is the ninety three, the twenty five thousand coming out of the ninety three or that's on top of the ninety three?
No, it's not on top.
Coming out of the ninety.
Correct.
So if you decide not to go with Ebix, so that's twenty five thousand, we don't need anymore. Your bid's still ninety three thousand?
Correct.
Is that with Navigator?
That's, that's, that's essentially to cover the cost of Employee Navigator.
So it's free. The other guy, the other company is charging. They're not.
Yeah. So, so we have to, we have to pay for our license to Employee Navigator. So essentially this ninety three thousand is included with our full, you know, bottom line cost with all of our technology. If you decide to not use Employee Navigator, we'll have to, you know, spend that money on Ebix. So we'll still be at the ninety three thousand, right?
Got you. Okay. Any more questions, council members? I see none. Thank you so much. I see any hands.
Okay. Anyone from SNEAR?
No.
Yeah, that's why he's not, that's why he's not our favorite president.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
It was a pleasure. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Great presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Whatever he has is wrong. Email me or email.
You're up.
With the bits, please.
Right here.
But what he said, he said.
No, this is wrong. He directed it. No, he said this number is with this, because this is sixty eight. What's it at ninety two? Went down to sixty nine seven. No, that's his initial.
They're saying this should do price regularly. Okay. But they're doing all these other things. So this.
Right here.
Plus to twenty five. He'll get rid of it.
No.
No, he'll get rid of it. Help, help us get rid of it.
No, no.
No, we, we, we would still have to do it on our own. We can't afford to do it. So that means our HR to them.
Okay. All right. That's not what I got out of it.
Yeah, that's what I understood, that we would have to do it in-house.
All right. All right. Like that. We got, we got a squad in here today. You guys look like, you guys are going, you guys look like you guys are going to war.
You're going to be exhausted by the end of this night.
What company are you with?
Manquin Vance.
What is it?
Manquin Vance.
I thought you guys were bought out.
I like that.
Then the last, uh.
We do have handouts since the, we had USB, but we don't, we now have handouts. So it looks like you got them. Very good.
It used to be Cornerstone?
Yeah, Cornerstone Municipal. About probably seven, eight years ago. Yes.
All right.
All right.
Well, sir, you have fifteen minutes.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for, uh, allowing us to, to talk tonight and, and show us, we'll show you hopefully how we can help you in the future.
Can I pause the time real quick, please? I, I just want to be clear, council chair, that's okay. The reason why we're doing this in the past, usually the administration would just come in, they pick a company, council's uninformed, nobody knows what they're voting for. So, you know, I've only been the mayor for like fifteen minutes. So I want you guys to know this. It was seven and a half just, uh, three hours ago. Yeah, yeah. Well, we've had it some time. Um, but I want to be able to give everybody the opportunity. Whoever wants to do business with the city of Dearborn Heights, come out, present respectfully. And then, you know, Dearborn Heights Council to be able to make their, their ultimate decision.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Mark Manquin. I am the founder of Manquin Vance. I founded the agency about twenty years ago. And I founded it with, really at that time with a kind of a singular focus around Gatsby forty five, which none of you probably heard of, but it was around accounting rules that today now represent how you represent retiree healthcare liabilities. So we started a boutique practice focusing only in the municipal market. Uh, we soon moved into, when the financial crisis hit eight and nine, we soon jumped in and helped a lot of our municipalities, cities, counties and townships help really through their budget crisis at that time. So we've cut our teeth on and during very difficult times in this marketplace. And what we wanted to really demonstrate today, we brought our whole team today. Uh, we wanted to demonstrate that we are really the agency that focuses solely in the municipal market. You, you won't probably interview anyone else that just works in the municipal market day in and day out. So we're problem solvers, we're financially savvy when it comes to understanding healthcare budgets, how the healthcare budget works, how the healthcare contract works. It's not as simple as just buying rates these days. Most of you are self-funded, so claims are important and we're very innovative. So what we're really going to demonstrate and show you today is our team has the breadth of experience that you need as a city to really accomplish whatever your objectives are. We're here to partner. We always partner with our clients. We identify your objectives and we help you find what those objectives are. We really analyze your budget and we really work to make this a very value-based healthcare plan option for your employees. Ultimately, that's what it's about, providing you a valued product when it comes to the healthcare. So we're going to differentiate ourselves and most of that differentiation is our team. So I'm going to introduce each one of our team members. Myself, we each have a role, very specific, you know, very specific role that we each play. In, in the presentation, I think on page two, you'll see our team members, you'll be assigned six people to the account. My focus is on, uh, being a, being the thought leader and looking at the market and looking at innovative programs in the marketplace. And we can probably talk a little bit about that once I introduce the team. But now I'm going to introduce my team. My first person that I'm going to introduce is John Vance. John, please come up here.
Good evening and thank you for this opportunity. I'm John Vance. I've been in the industry for over twenty years. I stopped counting at twenty. It's more than that, but I just, scary. I had hair and skinnier and the whole deal. But I have been working exclusively with municipal accounts for over eighteen years. I just hit my eighteenth anniversary with the firm and I've been in the industry for probably more like twenty-six years total. And that's important because working day in and day out, and everyone will introduce themselves, but it's important to know who we are and what we offer to you and our municipal clients. All everyone here works on every day is just municipal accounts. Me in particular, I won't take up too much time because we have more slides to get to. Me in particular, I am one of the partners and I also oversee strategic programs. I have been involved in more hours than anyone in the state, and I can say that easily in collective bargaining with retiree healthcare, innovative programs, cost-cutting initiatives. When you have almost fifty municipal clients, you are going to see just about everything. You're going to see groups all along the spectrum of trying to make their next payroll to fully funded Gatsby, fully, fully funded, uh, retiree healthcare and, and pension. And so creating solutions within that, that's something I focus a lot of my time on. Todd?
Good evening. Thank you for the time. My name's Todd Urick. Um, I'm an account director with Manquin Vance. I work closely with John and Mark and our whole team here. I've been in the industry also for twenty years, stopped counting as well, um, and really made the, the choice to focus on municipal and public sector benefits. Probably about a decade ago, um, I'm always a teacher and it's really something that's, it's important to me. I love working with cities, townships, counties to help them navigate this. And my role as an account director is really to be the quarterback of the process, to help you problem solve, um, set those strategic goals and make sure that we're executing on them. My background, I've done everything in this industry, strong financial background, working up from an analyst, worked as an account manager, learning the compliance side. And I really, really enjoy, um, working with the strategy piece of it, whether that's, you know, doing pre-bargaining or bargaining, um, meeting with your employees, meeting with council to, you know, educate on, on what, what the opportunities are out there. And that's really my role in the company.
Good evening. Hi, I'm, uh, John Kowalski. I'm a senior plan analyst. I've been doing this for twelve plus years. Working primarily with self-funded accounts for the, the better part of the last eight or nine of those years. Every size group that you can imagine from, from small to, you know, thousands plus life employers. But the last five or six years have been with Manquin Vance here focusing on municipal clients uh, and working with, with the, uh, the plan sponsor to help project budgets, uh, look at claims activity and kind of the whole picture of what can we do to help contain the costs?
Good evening. My name's Denise Cole and I'm a senior account manager with Manquin Vance. I've been with the company for three and a half years. Before that, I was with Blue Cross and Blue Shield in Michigan. So I have a very extensive background with Blue Cross. My job role is your point of contact. I'm an extension of your human resources, human resources department. I can help with benefits for both retirees and actives, Cobra compliance, um, anything to do with open enrollment. Like I said, Cobra, anything you need, I'm an extension in the benefits area of your human resources department.
Good evening. Last but not least, uh, my name is Jamie Gibson. Um, I am the group account coordinator. I've been in the industry, well, for twenty years or more as well. Um, I'm more of the day-to-day. I would be the contact for any, uh, enrollment or eligibility or claim or billing or, um, any issues you may be having with any carriers. I have a strong background in HR, so I do understand the questions that come, um, in and, you know, i- if someone were to walk in your office or someone to work, walk in the HR team's office, I would be the person you could say, call Jamie, um, and I could take care of and facilitate the issue for you. Thank you.
Let me get me again. This is a challenging process that you're undertaking to evaluate brokers and we don't envy the process. We're, we're very familiar with it. We've been in the industry for a long time. We know that you're talking to a lot of people. They're probably all going to appear very similar. Uh, by the end of the night, you might have a hard time remembering who said what and what company was represented in each session. We find ourselves to look very different than these other companies and we just want to hit on those key points. The reason that most of the brokers are going to appear similar is because the core job is, is the blocking and tackling, getting renewals, running marketing, um, doing open enrollment process, communications for employees, those are all key parts of our job and we perform them very well. Getting renewals, running marketing, um, doing open enrollment process, communications for employees, those are all key parts of our job and we perform them very well. But we go beyond that, so you're gonna hear that, you know, other brokers are looking at their analysis on claims, they're projecting your cost. Every broker's gonna do that, we're gonna do more. Um, the broker market tends to lack specialization. So, the big brokers out in the market that we're talking to, really, they're looking at a blend of private and public sector groups. So they're really not focused on your specific market of being a municipality in Michigan. Being in Michigan is important, we have different rules, we have, we have public acts that apply only to Michigan municipalities. That's something to keep in mind as you're talking to, um, all of us today. The challenge is, how do you judge fit? Um, you've been working with somebody for a long time, they're doing a good job, but are they really doing what's gonna take you to that next level? And that's a difficult decision to make when you're stepping into this probably, maybe for the first time in, in years. Or maybe it's something that, we do this every day, obviously you have other things that you're doing, um, day-to-day. So we just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you and to express that we understand that this is a difficult process.
I apologize, there's no page numbers. The page that says the value of more, the Manquinn Vance difference, as Todd alluded to, you are in unenviable position because this is not buying concrete where it's priced, you can step on it, walk it, you, it's very easy to see what kind of quality you're receiving. You are buying a service where, as Todd alluded to, we all sound the same because so much of what we do is the same. But the value of why we're different, why we, and I can say this definitively. We have, and this isn't our whole company, this is, this is, this is our, one of our teams. A-team. Televised, oops, sorry, sorry everyone at home. We have more municipal clients than any, for healthcare consulting than anyone in the state. Anyone you're gonna interview tonight, and we probably know every single one of them, we have more than anyone in the state. I'm not talking property casualty, I'm talking about healthcare consulting, what you're interviewing for, we have more than anyone. And why that's so important is, look, we know what's happening in the private sector, we know what's happening at the healthcare world at large, that's important to know and have your finger on the pulse. But at the end of the day, we are immersed in what you all deal with, that is our core competency every day. And so, we have experience working with groups in emergency management and consent. We have groups that are, look, hey, John Vance, I wanna make a change in retiree healthcare, I need to save money, but I have no legal authority to do it. I have no appetite from my city council to do it. What can we do? Our team has gone in and saved clients a lot of money. I saved a client last year with these two individuals right here. An account we share in Oakland County, we saved them two million dollars cash flow a year, thirty-four million dollars in unfunded OPEB liability, just in efficiencies. Okay, just in efficiencies, so that's so important because we live and breathe this, your data just makes so much sense. Okay, we just, we get your data, we understand how to scrub it and we can, efficiencies, and efficiencies can be things like labor contracts. I can't tell you how many labor contracts I look at, not attorney, we work closely with your labor attorneys. How many, how many labor contracts I've looked at and I see barbed wire, I see potential legal liability. I see liability from the standpoint of um, maybe ACA penalties or, or whatever may be, or, or really risk management. So that's stuff that we, we do all of that, that we just, that's in part of what we do, we don't charge extra for that. The number of CBAs I've looked at, read, reviewed, et cetera, it's, I couldn't, I couldn't count. We have more experience because it's all we do day in and day out. We used to have a number on our website, it's a little out of date, it's probably still there, of the amount we've saved our clients in efficiencies over the last five years, and it's tens of millions of dollars. Here's what that is, if we have clients that say, look, I have to make some tough decisions in bargaining, I need to reduce plans, that is not an efficiency savings, that is something you just need to do. We will help you analyze that, we will help you negotiate, or excuse me, communicate that to your unions, we will also bring that and communicate to the employees at large. But we have saved tens of millions of dollars for clients in cash flow just by efficiencies finding things. We don't take any percent of recovery or anything, that is just what we do, and that's why we've grown, we don't have really any business development sales. This is word of mouth growth, people recommending us. The next bullet is more dedicated focus on municipalities, here's why this is important. Because we only live in this market, we understand what you need. And I'm not saying anything about our competitors in any way, but it's just the reality, we've all worked in other organizations. Teams are comprised typically of different strengths and different levels of experience. Because municipalities are so complicated, we need to hire very talented senior people. So for example, the financial side is not something that's that important in the private sector, it's about compliance, we hire a John Kowalski because we need someone that's unbelievably strong with the financial analytics. We recognize that in this market, you have some deficiencies in the municipal market that private doesn't have, and one of those is because you don't have as much money, you can't create the next widget. You tend, I don't mean you in particular, the royal you if you will, you might be very well-staffed in HR, but a lot of groups aren't, we have clients where the clerk is doing HR. So once again, we hire very senior, tenured people like Denise to be able to come in, there are no weak spots on our team. And because, once again, we have a lot of understaffed clients, that's why we created a role in a position that doesn't exist at most organizations, I can't speak to the other eight. But I can tell you from what I know, I'm not sure it exists at most other companies, which is the group benefit account coordinator, that's Jamie. That's a person that's your liaison to help you with claim eligibility, et cetera, just another extension for your HR folks. So living in this market, we absolutely understand what it is you need and we built a team quite literally to surround what you need. So to beat it to death, because I, my kids will tell you, I love to beat dead horses, is this is all we do and the experience we've generated, whether it's benchmarking, I know exactly what fire unions are, are negotiating right now. I know exactly what they're asking for in collective bargaining, we know exactly what um, the, the hot topics are, the headwinds, what other municipalities are doing, trends. I could tell you right now what they are all doing with GLP-one weight loss drugs. Because again, when you have that many clients and a big extension through our just friends in the industry through labor attorneys, et cetera, prospects, we know what most are doing.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vance.
Thank you.
Yeah, just give me one second. Mayor, what was their bid?
Their bid was a hundred thousand dollars.
Is that including uh, EBITX or?
EBITX, does that include the EBITX?
Yes, the most that you would pay would be seventy-five, and if there are commissions, it reduces that seventy-five dollar for dollar. So out of that twenty-five, we pay for your EBITX. The seventy-five is the most we will make from, I'm sorry, the most that you will pay, offsetting dollar for dollar from any commissions that exist.
Okay, so that's seventy-five is the bid and twenty-five for the EBITX.
Yes.
So what's, what's your client retention rate?
Basically one hundred, I mean, there are occasions where, this is a relationship business, we've certainly had situations, it's rare where someone in HR, let's say, has a relationship with somebody, another broker. That happens, right, so that does happen, absent that happening a few times in our twenty-year history, we retain our clients.
Any clients you can list nearby, any cities?
Yeah, ab- absolutely. Uh, so we have clients, um, I'm just gonna, I'm, I'm gonna go nearby, but really tri-county area. You're talking about Sterling Heights, you're talking about Lansing, Flint, Royal Oak, you're talking about
Dearborn.
Dearborn.
It's the closest.
Right, Dearborn being the closest, right?
Yeah.
Um, uh, south, city of Southfield, just thinking of some of the larger, Redford, right?
And are, are you comfortable with EBITX or do you, you guys prefer something else, a different platform?
So what we love is we love our clients making the determination, we help our clients, but we do not like the models where the consultant owns the benefit pro-platform because then you're beholden to the, the consultant, us. We love you owning it and whatever platform you use, we will integrate ourselves.
We have gone out the bid for platforms, if you're not, if you haven't tested the market in a number of years, we have, in fact, we did that for the city of Dearborn, probably seven, eight years ago, we went to the marketplace to look at platforms. We have a couple of preferred vendors we've worked with in the past, but it's not, it's not our primary function, so I would recommend going out to the marketplace if you're not happy with your current software, because we could definitely assess the different software packages out there for you. Uh, and there's one package that comes along with um, one of our services, but again, I wouldn't sell that, I would just recommend going to the marketplace.
City of Dearborn uses EBITX too as well?
We don't have many client, I don't think we have anyone using EBITX, no.
No, what does uh, City of Dearborn uses?
Who's the account manager on that, that was numbered?
They went with uh, was it the PNA?
Yeah.
PNA.
Yeah, I, I will tell you, there are, um, it's, it's, it varies, you know, we have cli- clients with Ben Express, we have clients a lot with Employee Navigator. It really comes down to complexity too, Employee Navigator is very good for a smaller community that doesn't, isn't complicated.
What's the cost for that?
Employee Navigator's free.
Free?
But, but if you are complicated, like City of Flint's very complicated, they have a, a system, they're much larger than you, theirs is about eighteen thousand dollars a year through Ben Express.
What about PNA that you wanted to mention?
PNA, I don't know the cost off the top of my head, but I could, I could find out what Dearborn is spending. I, I would say twenty-five thousand is a very high number for what we see in that market, we typically see less than that.
Yeah.
So which is why I would recommend bidding, because if nothing else, maybe we can get a better price from, from your current.
A councilman, go ahead.
Where are you located?
Troy, Michigan.
In Detroit?
All of our employees are working in Michigan.
Yeah, we're all, we're all.
All work is performed in Michigan.
Thank you.
Um, is your contract, is it locked rate or does it increase yearly?
We, I think it was only set for a hundred thousand, I don't think it was a multi-year. So, right now it's at a hundred.
And I could tell you, I don't, in our twenty-year history, I don't think there's a single time, Mark, tell me if you're wrong. I've been here eighteen years, you started twenty years ago, I don't think we've ever increased someone's cost. I just don't think we've ever gone and gone back and just increased the rate on it.
Well, I wouldn't, so multi-year contracts, like with Dearborn, Dearborn had like a six-year contract, and we built an escalator, we will build inflation escalators.
But in the contract, in the contract.
It's usually a contract.
It's usually after two years, I've never escalated in year two, usually we do a fixed two-year and then we escalate beyond two years.
But out of contract, we've never just called a client and said, we want more money.
And usually it's an option, usually the, the contracts we see the most in this market is two-year term and then multi-year options to renew. That's pretty standard.
Uh, what's, what's the call turnaround time for you guys, if somebody calls from today?
I, I love that question. I, I love it, I mean that because we created a service standard where our employees, everyone you're looking at back here, a percent of their compensation is tied to client satisfaction. I call my clients every year and ask them, how satisfied are you, how accountable, responsive, proactive, all these people are? Are they accessible, are they responsive, same day, we're touching, we may not have the answer, but if you call, we are touching you the same day. We may not say, here's the answer, but we're going to acknowledge, we created our service standard because of Blue Cross, of the op, things that made us crazy about Blue Cross. Where you wouldn't know if they had received your email, we touch all of our client questions the same day. And it might be something as simple as, I'll get back to you tomorrow, or it might say, here's the answer, same day, we're going to touch you. Now, if it comes in late at night, obviously it's gonna be the next morning.
Yeah, our standard is, if you call before noon, you get called before the end of the day, if it's afternoon, by the next morning. That's our standard.
Uh, this team here that
Yes.
supposedly would work with Dearborn, how many other municipalities will they be working with at the same time to see how far they're stretched out?
Yeah, that question I will tell you is not asked enough in finalist meetings, I think it's a great question, is do you have capacity, and the answer is yes. Because the municipal market is so much more complicated than your average non-municipal or public sector client, we actually overstaff. Overstaff, we actually about years ago, created an additional role in our account management department because we, we just needed to always stay ahead. We don't backfill and go, oh, we have a lot of revenue, let's backfill, we always create a need, so if all of a sudden we start getting towards capacity, we hire another person.
So danger, on average, an account manager, account director will have ten to twelve accounts?
Okay.
Yeah, about half of what the usual market has.
So, you, you, you touched on something that was, I had forgotten about, OPEB.
Yeah.
Uh, that came up about eight years ago, I don't know if anybody else is familiar with that other than Councilman uh, Constant, when we're, what, about a hundred and fourteen million?
Yeah.
Behind. And we were forced by the city, by the government, uh, state.
Under PA two oh two.
Yeah, uh, yeah, P, PA two oh two to start, and that's something that I'd like the city to look at closely and see what we can do to.
So in our presentation deck at the end, since we didn't have enough time today, we have our retiree healthcare experience. We've probably worked on more retiree healthcare evaluations and analysis than anybody. Because we did it for Wayne County, we did it for Flynn, we did it for Lansing, we did it for Southfield, we did it for almost all our municipalities over.
I just wanna say, sometimes the lowest bidder is not always the best bidder. And you get what you pay for.
I agree.
Uh, when you said OPEB, I said, these guys are really familiar with what's going on.
You can't live in this space and have that many clients without touching everything you touch.
Thank you.
I was trying to be part of the municipal stability board, remember when that board was in place?
Yeah.
I was, when it was first adopted, I was out there in Lansing a couple of times a month when it first, because we were, we were trying to evaluate, what was the state really wanting to do with our clients?
You know, we get, we get a lot of change here, sometimes uh, you get change in administrations for whatever reason. Uh, but that knowledge goes away and right away you said OPEB and I go, oh my god, my heart just went back up in my throat.
Sorry.
Uh, but I thank.
Reality though, it's still.
Oh, it, it is, and it's probably something a lot of people up here don't know about.
Right.
And they gotta, they gonna have to learn it.
It, it, you know, we, we looked at, a lot of our cities, like I think City of Flynn was the worst over the years. Where they had, out of their healthcare budget, seventy-five percent of every dollar that went out the door was on retiree healthcare. So they would work like dogs to change things in collective bargaining to try to affect that twenty-five percent, well, that's not gonna really have, uh, impact your budget.
Correct.
You want, they, they were forced to do something, as ugly as it could be.
And we were forced to by the state, so.
Right.
But that's also a, a part of what we bring to the table, having so many clients, we can put you in contact with people, you know, I have a client that went from a new client that self-funded. And the finance director wanted to understand how the chargeouts are different, I put them in contact with other finance directors, so we just have a network. We can also put you in, in touch with folks that have done and you can speak to, how'd you do X?
So you, you said Employee Navigator is free, how is it free, do you guys like pay for it or?
Yeah, we, we, so yeah, we buy it for clients that want it, but we don't push it. So if a, a client, but again, it's, it's more limited. So for a group that's a little more straightforward and is okay what they're getting into, Employee Navigator is something that you, that they don't let groups buy, they only let consultants buy it, so a lot of consultants buy a license, we have it, so groups that want it can buy it, we pay for it, it's a full license and.
We could, we could compare that to what you have today, and if it's similar, why pay twenty-five thousand dollars, right?
Right.
I mean, you could get it for free, so that would be one thing we could assess.
Of course, but.
Thank you. Uh, first of all, I'm impressed that you're the largest uh, in the municipal market. It was impressive, um, you know, we mentioned the different software, the EBITX and Employee Navigator, are they all basically the same?
Um, it, well, it depends on what you need, and so if you are really straightforward, Employee Navigator is gonna do the job, if you're complicated you are gonna absolutely want something more robust that you would truly pay for than an Employee Navigator. Now, that's where the evaluation comes in, we would look, okay, so one of the first things we do is we do a full audit on your plans, your healthcare programs, what you look like, costs, we learn about your philosophies. Where are you with bargaining, where are you in ability to pay everything, what are you gonna feel for, what do you, do, what actually do you get out of your system? What do you need it for, and then we'll determine with your support, of course, is, is that the right fit? Are you buying, are you bringing a nuclear gum, gun, you know, nuclear bomb to a knife fight, you really don't need the nuclear bomb, so have something more appropriate. So we could have that conversation, maybe you need something that complex, we just don't know at this point.
Yeah, it depends on what you, it really depends on what you currently have, because some of the more robust software, it could have ACA reporting attached to it. It could have unpaid sick leave, they could have a lot of the other things that are being tracked around HR, more HR-related functions versus just enrolling in benefits. So, things are, you know, so in the public sector, I know Dearborn, when they assess their software, they had a lot of things they wanted to add to that software. So I meant, we went to a vendor that ended up having more specialties and customizations around that software. It doesn't mean that, that you need that, so we'd have to assess as to what you're really looking for, because it can get very expensive out there if you customize any software.
It is more than any of our clients are paying, but maybe you need it, you just don't know at this point.
In your opinion, do you think that something like uh, employee that could be sufficient for our city?
That would be part of our review to really determine what you truly need out of your system, it would be hard to say it at this point in time. It's enough for a lot of groups, but for example, more complicated groups, City of Royal Oak, it's too complicated for Royal Oak, it's too complicated for Southfield, it's too complicated for Lansing, but it's perfect for a Hazel Park. It's perfect for a Bloomfield Hills, um, Sturgis, I mean.
And we don't, we don't know your, we don't know your current software.
Yeah.
So admittedly, we just.
We just don't know the complexity you have in your current programs.
It'd be nice to know, because that's gonna be a factor, some twenty-five dollars, thousand dollar factor in some cases.
Yeah.
Presentations.
Yeah.
I will say it's the highest number of any of our clients, so it does seem high.
Yeah.
But maybe you are so complicated that everyone would charge that, it feels high, we don't have anyone paying that, we're very simple. Okay.
Yeah, and so it could be very easy savings, yes.
Okay, excellent, any more questions? How long have you worked with City of Dearborn for, how many years?
Over fifteen years.
Thanks. Thank you, uh, Madam Clerk. President's news.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just one more question on those.
Yes, uh, good evening, gentlemen, I just had one question, if memory serves me correctly, did you guys used to represent the city of Dearborn Heights in the past?
Yeah, that was probably over fifteen years ago. Yes, we did. We did. The mayor brought, the, the mayor, at that time, the mayor brought in Plamran. Plamran, as you know, the mayor of the, uh, was a CPA. So we, we did, we worked for several years and then eventually he brought his friends in.
God rest his soul.
Yes, God rest his soul.
Any more question? Also, all right, perfect. Thank you so much. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. Thank you. Thank you. Great presentation. Boy was in here, huh? We're well protected tonight.
I'm not going to lie to you guys. I've been here.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
How are you?
Who's George? Yes, who the gun is.
Bob, thank you for saying that. I'm, I'm, I'm very at home because, um, I grew up in Dearborn Heights, went to Crestwood High School as well. We were the first football team to make the playoffs in, uh, many, many moons ago.
So you're still a youngster.
Yes, in, in monthly, yes, physically.
I'm a, I'm a seventy-two grad.
Seventy-two, Ray, excellent. Great. Sixty-eight, I think they made, Crestwood was sixty-eight or sixty-nine? Sixty-nine, yeah. So my ninety-two, so that makes me twenty-nine. Is that what it was? God bless. Mr. Turfy, yes, yes, we made, we played, uh, Farmington Hills, Harrison, who is no longer a school, but they had a powerhouse. So I digress. I know your time is valuable. I know we have people waiting, so bye, Bob.
Okay, sir. You have fifteen minutes, please, and we'll take questions.
Perfect. Um, so you already met George? Uh, my name, my name is Steve Miller. I actually grew up in the Westland, Levonia area, so, so this is kind of my home turf too. But, uh, I do reside out in Grand Rapids, but I'm all across the state of Michigan. So we're here from Capnic. We're one of the largest privately held, uh, agencies in the entire country. Uh, I think last time we checked, we're number like seventy, and that includes all your public firms and all that, so. Um, I am newer to Capnic. I've been doing benefit consulting for, this is my twenty-third year. Uh, worked with a lot of municipalities, have a lot of experience, and, and I know George also has a lot of experience in the, in the public sector. Um, how many years roughly working with public sector group?
Well, my entire career spans about twenty-five years, but, uh, conferred with pension systems on financial matters, business owners. Height net worth individuals part of me. It's, it's vast, but I'm still young.
So, um, with, without further ado, we do have a little snapshot of our team. Uh, we do have dedicated account service teams, but the important thing is you get George and I, we both have a lot of experience. We are your consultants. We are a consulting model. So we're not here just selling you, uh, a, a service. We're selling ourselves. Uh, we're selling our experience that we have, that we, we can bring to the city. And, um, we, we would primarily be who you'd work with as well as the rest of our account management team. So not here with us tonight, his name's Mike Wasick. He came to us from Lockton. Um, he's got a ton of experience, fifteen plus years in the business, working a lot with self-funded plans, also some municipal clients. And then Holly Smith, uh, also not here tonight. She has about twenty-five years of experience. She ran, um, the HR for Miller Johnson, which is a big law firm in the state of Michigan. So she's got an HR background. A lot of our account managers have HR backgrounds. So we feel like that's, uh, that's really important to help understand the work that we do for our clients. So I don't really want to talk too much about our, our firm. You know, everybody gets up here and says we have great customer service and we have solid experience on the, on the teams. And, uh, we really wanted to make this a little bit different and unique and, and maybe a little educational. Uh, we did notice when we were, um, this is our second go-around, um, on the RFP process, but we, we did kind of check some agendas and minutes. Uh, we did notice that your, uh, stop loss went up quite a bit. Year over, or, you know, for this renewal season, um, we're seeing a lot of that out there. And I think the message that we're here to share with you tonight is there is something you can do about it. We, we do have a lot of experience helping, uh, governments and, and private sector employers in your same situation. It's not necessarily unique right now. You know, if you, um, the renewals that we've seen this year are some of the worst, uh, since, uh, healthcare reform. So, um, you know, with that said, you, you are unique, but your situation, you're dealing with many others shared that same situation and, and we have a lot of experience helping with that. So, um, I'm now on page five, if you guys, if anybody's, if, if everybody's following along. I know, I know our time together is brief. Um, but so a little bit about, more about what I do as a consultant. And, um, obviously love working with, with my man George here. I'm a founding member. It's called Health Rosetta. Has anybody heard of Health Rosetta? Okay, that's okay. Um, so Health Rosetta, I, I started when I was younger, literally my younger twenties, I said, I got into healthcare and immediately realized that it was not, it, it was, it was pretty messed up, okay? Our healthcare system's complex. It's complicated. It's way too expensive. Uh, there's a lot of problems with it. So I, I set on a journey to fix healthcare in the United States. And I'm proud to say that as a founding member of Health Rosetta, it's a large national organization. I'm one of the founding members of it. We are putting a blueprint together to do just that. We've had a lot of success across the country. Um, I've spoken nationally on the topic and, um, it's really an amazing organization. I did put some information on Health Rosetta in our RFP, but really it's about making healthcare sustainable. And, um, I'm going to get into a little bit about how we do that in the presentation today. But typically with our government clients, we, we, we do regularly achieve savings of twenty percent plus. You, you know, and we can get into, you know, what that looks like. And it sounds like a big number and it sounds like it's too good to be true. I promise you, it's not. I have worked with some very large municipal clients in my career, spent a lot of time working with City of Grand Rapids, Kent County. Um, I've done that for both of them. Um, it, it, I actually exceeded those numbers, far exceeded those numbers. So we do believe in transparency and fiduciary, um, responsibility, even though you are not governed by ERISA. And your HR benefits people in the room will know what ERISA is. That does not apply to government, but it does not mean that being a good fiduciary is a good thing for you, uh, your employees as well as the taxpayer. And we do believe in transparency and fiduciary. Um, we are including, um, da, a very, very robust data analytics and population health management platform, and that's included in our fee. So every single month, we get thirty days of your claim information that come into our system. What that allows us to do is actively manage your health plan. And I know just reviewing some of the other proposals that were attached to the agenda tonight, I believe we're the only party that is offering a full, uh, analytics platform, an independent analytics platform, okay? And I'll get into the details and happy to answer any questions on what that, what that means for you. But essentially, you cannot manage something that you cannot see. And if you're relying solely on data from Blue Cross Blue Shield or their platform, you, you're, at the end of the day, you're only going to see what they want you to see, okay? So better data, it's going to give you better results. It's going to allow us to do a better job for you and your members. It's going to give you better quality healthcare, so we don't just pay attention to cost. We also pay attention to quality, because quality is important too. Um, it's also how we validate our work. So if we say we're going to come in and save you money, um, that's how we validate what, the work that we're doing is through our analytics platform. It's an independent data source that we can actually show you, um, how we're, how we're managing that data. Um, so we do have a very high-touch model. We meet with our clients, um, especially our self-funding clients, we meet with them monthly. So we review financial information every single month. So as new claimants pop up, we're not, we're not just looking at your plan once a year at renewal. Every single month, we're looking at your plan. We're looking for opportunities to save money. Um, and I'll get into a couple of examples of, of what that looks like. It's, it's very different. It's a very different approach. Um, but it, it, it does work. So want to get into, so we don't have a lot of time, but just talking about some of our risk management strategies. And there's a difference between risk management strategies and cost control strategies, okay? So risk management strategies, that's primarily what you have stop loss for, okay? And you have a stop loss today through Blue Cross Blue Shield, correct? Not, okay. So Blue Cross Blue Shield is pooled stop loss. So you're, you're already in a pool. So the fir, first question we need to do is, is answer the question, are you, is the pool benefiting you or is it hurting you, okay? Um, there are other pooled products, um, but at, at the end of the day, stop loss alone accounts for less than ten percent of your total cost of your health plan. The big opportunities in your claim costs. It's in us doing things that benefit the member that actually reduce the cost of claims, because that's where most of your plan costs are coming from. So we can save you a ton of money on stop loss. Let's say we cut your stop loss premium in half. Um, it, it, yes, it'll move the needle, but that's, that's a, a small part of your total plan cost. Does that make sense? So we do have captive, captive programs. There are captive, there's a lot of captive programs out there. Just due to time constraints today, I'm not going to dive into them. Those are another form of a, of a risk pooling that helps you avoid some volatility with your renewals. And, um, those are great because you also get a dividend with those. You have the opportunity to earn a percentage of your premium back every year. Um, but at the end of the day, we, we do utilize our analytics platform as well. So it's the better data that you have, and think of it this way. Let's say you have a lot of high-cost claimants going on and we're trying to sell your business to a stop-loss carrier, okay? Would that person buying your business, if, if you have the best data and we can tell you what's going on with everybody in your population, do you think they're going to get more aggressive in their pricing? Right, because you know what you're buying, right? So that's where analytics comes in. It allows us to negotiate on your behalf. And we found out, uh, we've come in behind other brokers who didn't have analytics. And they, they said, well, you're stuck with Blue Cross or a pooled product. We've come in behind them and said, no, you can do an individual product. Or, um, in the City of Grand Rapids case, we were so confident in our projections, they didn't have stop loss. Um, I'm not saying you're, you'd go without stop loss, but I'm, I'm just saying the, the question needs to be, you know, we can ask those types of questions. And having better data allows us to, to, to point you in the right direction. Um, the other thing that we look at is network transparency, and this is, a lot of these things are also holding Blue Cross Blue Shield accountable. So in the event that, you know, you don't want to leave Blue Cross, that's fine. There are other options out there. You know, we can look at them, but having this type of data, it does allow you to hold Blue Cross accountable. Because they do make a lot of ancillary income that is not disclosed off of health plans. And we help you identify where, where that money, I kind of call it where the bodies are buried. And, uh, we help you take that back to Blue Cross. It does, it is a negotiation tactic. It is leverage, um, and it's real. So when we share that with them, they do respond. So a lot of people talk about, well, we're big and we have a lot of business. We are one of Blue Cross Blue Shield's largest agencies. Um, there's other large agencies that also have a lot of business with Blue Cross. I will tell you, the greater leverage comes from the money that they're making off of your plan and, and, and bringing that into the daylight, okay? Uh, we also have some really good network transparency tools, so we are able to look at other networks without actually, uh, going out to bid. So we can use your own information to compare how other networks and their contracts are performing. From a pharmacy perspective and a medical perspective, we have a benefit philosophy about delivering better benefits at a lower cost. So our strategy, it's rare that we go to a client and we say, let's talk about increasing co-pays deductibles. So I have a question for everybody. If I increase a deductible on a plan, does that generate cost savings for your health plan?
Should. It should.
So what it does is it shifts cost to the employee. Um, so it saves the, the city money, but not the health plan money. Because somebody's paying that claim. It doesn't change the cost of the healthcare that you're buying. So our strategies, we, what we try to do, what we do do is we have strategies that actually lower the cost of healthcare. So, um, on the pharmacy side, uh, I'm, I'm now on page nine. Well, you should look at page eight, because that gives you an idea of what the supply chain of prescription drugs looks like. And, um, you are with, uh, Blue Cross Pharmacy still, correct, Dewan? Okay. So, um, I could do a whole session on all the bodies that are buried with Blue Cross Pharmacy, okay? It's, it's actually really entertaining. Um, it, it's a lot of fun, but at the end of the day, you do have different options. There are uh, pass-through models, like is, has anybody heard of Mark Cuban's drug program, Cost Plus? Okay, we partner with Mark Cuban on that program. Um, we brought him, he's actually part of Health Rosetta, uh, nationally. Um, it's, uh, it's, it's a great program. So there are options out, there are solutions, but you have to be willing to go outside of the, the veil of the, of the Blue Cross. Now, the benefits of looking at these types of solutions are, um, we can deliver zero-dollar healthcare on the, the medical side and brand and specialty drugs for most of your employees at zero cost while still saving the city money. And, um, I, I, like I said, I don't have time to get into the details today, but if you ask me a question, I'll answer and tell you exactly how we do that. There are some examples of how we illustrate the savings, uh, as well on page nine. All right. And I know I'm, I'm going really quick, but, um, I only got a couple, a couple more points to make. So in our, within our analytics platform, so what it does is it's your data as the city, so we kind of put it in your hands. It, you know, you need, you should own your data, not Blue Cross, okay? Blue Cross, all they're doing is paying claims and they're giving you some value with the network. And what we found in all our years working with Blue Cross or any network is networks do not manage cost and they do not manage quality. And I can back that statement up too, if, if somebody wants to ask that question. Because that, a lot of people think about that and they say, wait a minute, so my network, my Blue Cross network does not manage costs and does not manage quality. And that, that is correct. So once we do have your data in our platform, we can tie in. Do you, do you take advantage of like Levango or, uh, uh, I think Maven, right? You, you have point solutions. You know, so, uh, there's a lot of point solutions out there. So we also use the ide, uh, data to identify point solutions that might provide ROI for you and, and your, your, uh, employees and their families. All right. So, um, we do also validate, there's a validation example on page eleven in there as well. So what I really wanted to get to, uh, is looking at, okay, how do we provide healthcare at zero dollars for employees and still save, you know, provide savings? Um, healthcare is local. So when I started Dallas Health Rosetta pass, path, uh, it was actually about fifteen years ago now. We tried taking a one-size-fits-all approach across the country and we realized really quick it doesn't work. Because you just even go to our southern neighbors down in Ohio or Indiana, healthcare system's completely different. I'll, I'm going to wrap up in literally a minute. The healthcare system is completely different. So Southeast Michigan and West Michigan are completely different, okay? Healthcare is local, so it's our experience here locally that really matters the most. And we are building tier-one healthcare solutions that deliver better quality care for your members at a lower cost. And I'm happy to go into how this works, but this is something that exists today. It's something that is growing. Every year we add new partners and it is, um, phenomenal potential. And I, I'm really excited about the next five years, what that's going to look like. But we need forward-thinking employers that want to be a part of this to keep that moving forward, because it is working. We're having phenomenal results with it. Um, and, and that's where a lot of the savings, so we have pharmacy savings and then we also have medical savings and, and I can dive into what that looks like. Um, the last thing, I just wanted to recap kind of where savings are coming from. Uh, so pharmacy benefit savings, we typically see anywhere from twenty-five upwards of forty percent savings using everything that we can do on the pharmacy side. And I know that sounds like a big number, but it, it, it is real. Um, we also look at your drugs being paid through the medical plan. The, so those are like your injectables, your chemotherapies, infusion therapies. If we can move, has everybody heard of a hematology center? Okay. If we move, uh, cancer patient to an independent hematology center and we source the drugs through three forty B, there's opportunities sometimes to save eighty to ninety percent on those really expensive drug costs. So, a, and your member is going to get a much better experience. They don't have to go to the hospital. They don't have to go, you know, they're going to be able to go to a very nice comfy chair and a very nice infusion center, uh, with a parking lot. They don't have to deal with parking.
Thank you very much, mister.
Yeah.
Well, but Mayor, what was the?
Ninety-two, ninety-two thousand ninety-five dollars. I, I have a question.
It's Capnic, yep.
What was it? Yeah, go ahead.
Um, is, I got two questions. Number one is that we use, uh, Ebix, what software do we use for employee access?
Uh, we, we would recommend transitioning to Employee Navigator. We would, we would provide that transition for you. We offer two platforms. We can, or we can, can continue to support you under Ebix if that's a possibility. Unless, do you know, do you, do you have that through a broker or are you direct with Ebix? Okay. So I, I do have experience with Ebix. Employee Navigator is a phenomenal platform. It has a lot of capabilities that, it has a lot of features that are, I, I think, it is a very good platform. I don't, Ebix, um, if you were to compare the two, you'd probably pick Employee Navigator. But we, we would give you the option. We have a shared services team. We do manage third-party systems, so that could be an option, but we are including the cost of Employee Navigator in our fee. So we're, we're, we're also a reseller for B-Swift, which is a third, it's another benefit administration system. So that would be another option that you would have as a city to move to. That, that option is, um, we can't include it at our base fee. It's a little bit more expensive than Employee Navigator. It does have features that Employee Navigator does not have. So that would be your, your choice if you wanted to use that platform. There, some of the features our clients find worth the extra cost. But you would, that's, that's just an option, letting you know it's available with us. We did a flat fee for three years.
Do you, do you, uh, pull us in with other bigger groups or do you not offer that?
Uh, we, we do through captive arrangements. So the, there is a pool, uh, in the, in the state of Michigan that one of our, our competitors runs. Uh, we are, we are aware of the pool. And, and again, I'd, I'd go back to, there are a lot of other options out there and, and a lot of captive solutions that effectively do the same thing.
And then I, I'm an attorney and I work with a big union.
Yep.
As far as the, does the, uh, healthcare company send out the, uh, Cobra notices? Does the employer, or is that something you guys do?
Uh, so one unique thing about us, and I believe it was in our RFP, is we are, are own TPA and we own, we do Cobra and flexible administration services. And, um, since we're here with you tonight, we, we would be willing to throw in Cobra administration if that's a pain point for you, without a change to our fee. So we can administer that in-house.
Okay, great, thank you.
Uh, I also like Councilman Sop's question where he makes the ask, you know, is this a set price? I thought it was a five-year deal though, is that correct or no? We have a five-year or, or deal. But my first question is if you used Ebix today, does it stay at ninety-two thousand dollars or are we using, are we paying the 119?
Uh, no, if you used Ebix today, it would be our, our flat fee. We would, we would take the twenty-five thousand dollars off of that because that would have to go to Ebix and.
Well, you would still be operating the Ebix though, correct? We wouldn't be doing, operating the Ebix.
We have a shared services team that could support that as long as that was, so if your contract's attached to your prior broker, that's a situation where I, I don't know that we may not be able to. And that's not, that's not a limitation on us. That's a limitation on your contract with your prior broker. So I, I can't answer that question, but if, as long as we're allowed to, yes.
Okay, so I, I, when you had the two options, the 119, 270, and so let me explain to you what happens. We have a company A that is charging us, say, ninety thousand dollars. If they're going to run our Ebix, they're charging us an extra 25,000. You're here coming in at ninety-two thousand, zero ninety-five, right? Yeah, all, almost ninety-three thousand. If you're, if you're going to run our Ebix, is in an additional 25,000 as well? Because we're already paying the 25,000, but instead of, also, we don't operate the Ebix, right? Our, our carrier does it. So I, what I want to know is, right now you've given us two options. The ninety-two thousand, ninety-five and the 119, 270. A 119, 270, I'm assuming is, is operating the Ebix and, and obviously.
No, no, that is a separate platform. So our, our fee at the ninety-two thousand dollars, that includes a benefit administration platform called Employee Navigator that would replace Ebix. Our goal would be to migrate you off of Ebix onto our platform. We would assist you with that process. It would be completely seamless for your team. So that is the most effective way that we can manage your group is through Employee Navigator. If for whatever reason you decide that you want to keep Ebix, we would support Ebix and you would still be at the same net fee.
Ninety-two thousand. What is the 119, 270 option then?
That's the B-Swift system.
Correct.
Platform.
That is a enhanced platform.
Okay.
Yes.
Good read, good read, Councilman Sop. That's why we keep it in the legislative side.
We're, we're very flexible. We, we want to do what's right for the city. So, you know, understand that, that, you know, we're going to do what's right for you. Okay?
Thank you. Those are my questions, Councilor, I'm all set.
Thank you. Any more questions, Councilmembers?
I have one more, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Can you name us a couple of municipalities that you're, in the area that you're using? And we've asked these questions to everybody.
Yeah, um, we, we have a lot of schools. We do, I know we have Canton Township, um, is, is a pretty big municipality in the area that we have. What's the other in Livingston County?
Ann Arbor.
Uh, yeah, we have Ann Arbor Public Schools, Detroit Public Schools. We, we have a, we have, we set up, we put a list in the RFP. Like I said.
Detroit Public Schools?
We do have Detroit Public Schools as a client. That's a very long-term client of ours. I think that would, that would speak to our ability to ma, work with a lot of unions in a very complex, uh, group. But we also have Ann Arbor Public Schools and so we, we have a lot of large public sector clients.
What would you say your client retention rate?
Um, I, I don't have to guess at it. So it's, uh, 95% right now, and, but that includes mergers and acquisitions. We've seen a lot of merger and acquisition activity this year with a lot of our larger clients. If you net those out, we're, um, closer to 99%.
Any more questions, anybody? I see none, thank you so much for your time. Great presentation.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Babatah only Greek, you know. Thank you guys, have a very night.
Thank you so much, sir, great presentation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How many more do we have?
One. One or two.
We have three more. I think I'm going to watch the rest on. The home of your babies.
Good evening. No, no. Dismissed.
You need to run?
I'm sorry?
Did you say you needed to run out?
No, no, no.
Looking for water.
Do we have power, somewhere we can put a PowerPoint up or no?
Yes, uh, can we? Angela's not here?
I do.
What company are you guys with?
Uh, Allied Insurance Managers.
Allied Insurance Managers bid is at ninety-four thousand, seven hundred thousand.
How much?
Ninety-four thousand, seven hundred.
Oh, COVID.
I don't know, put a mask on.
You looking for something? It's coming up.
And you have a plug by you?
There may be a plug right in the, uh, podium. Okay, perfect, thank you. We'll be short, guys, I promise, we'll, uh, take the 15 minutes allotted, allotted. What I've done is we've, we've taken our presentation, we put it down to, to consolidate it. So what I'd like to do is, is kind of hit on the highlights that we have and then kind of open up the question answers. I think everybody's probably had the time to review, review our, uh, presentation. Just want to kind of talk about kind of how we're different and what we, you know, what we can, what we can bring to you and hopefully, uh, work with you moving forward.
Thank you. Thank you. Practical merits are condescended to time.
We're down to 12, right? No, it's okay if I do, I didn't.
Yeah, it's probably better off.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, there we go. All right. Thank you. We need one for the mayor.
No big deal, just chop liver here. I will make the decision anyway, I'm going to leave it to the son of your body. He's only been a mayor for two minutes. Seventeen minutes right now.
All right, guys. Get started, uh, I'm Matt McDonald with Allied Insurance Managers. This is Brett Shippey from United Planners out of, uh, New York. I, I've been, I have quite a presence in, in the Dearborn community. I've been working with a lot of some of the charter schools. Hamadi Education is one of my customers, spent for 15 years right in your guys' backyard. Think the way that we're going to be different is, um, one, I've worked a lot in your community. I've worked with a lot of municipalities, but also trying to, to save, um, save you guys money, really looking at keeping Blue Cross Blue Shield in the, um, for your, for your provider, for your network, but carving it out, using, using a different approach, looking, bringing Brett in from, uh, United Planners out of New York and looking at, they, they have a program that they're using with all the municipalities in Pennsylvania and a lot of other, other states. And they can save tons of money on it. He's going to talk about that in a second. And also the second thing is on the prescription drug card. The prescription drug card really looking at carving out the drug card, getting the rebates back from Blue Cross. With your guys' group size, we should be able to keep Blue Cross as your provider. So, so all your union contracts stay, stay intact, um, use their discounts. Blue Cross has a great discounts, great technology. But really looking at trying to have a different approach, looking at the shop, the stop loss to, to get away from Blue Cross. Because Blue Cross has a lot of hidden fees that you're not going to see in there. Brett will talk about these briefly. Again, I'm going to hit on a few things and then kind of open for questions. I don't want to take, you know, 45 minutes of your guys' time because I, I just, I, you know.
We figured two hours of the, I don't know.
A little bit, bit about Allied Insurance Managers. We've been in business since 1987, um, we're a midsize agency out of Rochester Hills. Yeah, so on the self, again, hitting on, on what I want to talk to you guys about, where, where I think we're going to be different. On the self-insured client base, we're going to be looking to, um, partner with United Professional Advisors, uh, for the stop loss. And here's the deal, guys. We, the way you're doing the proposal here, we don't know what your numbers are, we don't know what your losses are. I can tell you this, we'll be able to work with Blue Cross and, and keep your costs where they are. Improve your service, you know, I, I'll have a local presence here. I'll give every, everyone of your customers will have my phone number. Everyone of your employees, if they have emergencies, they can contact me at any time. My staff, you know, is there for, you know, for the day-to-day services. Again, if we get calls, you know, you get calls in, you know, late at night, whatever. If, if something I can't answer, I'll call back. It'll be, at least someone will be there to let these people know, hey, I can't help you right now, but here's, here's the process. Think that's, do that with all my customers. It's kind of little, little different there. But again, I'm going to, um, let Brett talk a little bit about the, um, program that they work with out of Pennsylvania.
Yeah, so thank you, Matt. So a, a big part of your RFP that really attracted me to this piece, uh, was the innovation aspect. What you're trying to do to, to look at other options. You mentioned direct primary care, pharmaceutical carve-outs, different pieces like that. And that's really where we provide a, a big piece in what we do. Matt mentioned the, the PIMIC program that we operate in Pennsylvania with a, a company called Benicon, uh, which basically is a group purchasing, just like anything else in municipalities. Group purchasing is a big deal. You're, you're able to decrease costs across the board. Um, health insurance is no different in that. And the Benicon program started in 1999. It began actually as a group of municipalities joining together to reduce costs around health insurance that has since expanded across the entire state of Pennsylvania and the other 50 states as well have, have come on board over the last 30 years as that program has, uh, has advanced and grown. And that's really on your stop loss and your pharmaceutical spend to be able to decrease costs there. Which when we're looking at health insurance, it has to be a piece-by-piece approach to really control those costs. Otherwise you run into pieces that, like Matt talked about with, when you have everything all in one, there's no ability to be a, a true consumer, going out and purchasing and price matching and doing different things like that. And so when we're talking about innovative approaches and what we can do to control costs, those are your couple first ones where you're looking at stop loss expenses, you're looking at pharmacy costs. Uh, you're looking at what can we carve out? Still have a high level of coverage for our employees and for everybody, but at a decreased cost. And so one of the big things that we're going to look at, uh, as Matt mentioned, is maintaining the Blue Cross Blue Shield network across, uh, the population. But in doing so, looking at where we can create those savings on the stop loss, the pharmaceuticals, even looking at a direct primary care model to give people more access, especially with the HSA eligibility on those direct primary care. For anybody that don't know, and, and with telehealth and all of these different pieces, it's become a much, um, you have the ability now to actually remove those costs from your plan directly, which drives your premiums down in upfront and then gives people a better solution for, for primary care as well. Uh, where they, they basically have an on-demand, anytime reach out and get things taken care of. So across those things and looking at innovation, that's really what, uh, the best ways to control cost. It, I always liken it to the fact that when we go out looking for, uh, buying a car, we don't buy the first car on the lot that we come across. We shop around, we look for options. Same thing with health insurance is by creating a plan that works and by doing so by piece and parceling and finding the best rates for it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, little bit about our costs that we, we kind of went through. We came in at ninety-four thousand dollars. Twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars of that is for, um, to build out a navigator. If there's competent, if we take, if we take things over and we have, um, kickback from the, from the ancillary products, that, that twenty-five thousand dollars could, could go away. So a good portion of that could go away depending on, um, you know, if we have from the ancillary providers, like I think, um, Hartford may be one of your, one of your carriers there, um, that we could, you know, that, that could be greatly reduced during elimination. Because a lot of times what happens is there's, there's, um, the carrier partners will kick back a member to take care of the admin system. On the Ben admin system, um, we could work with what you have. We'd like to get you to switch over to Navigator. You know, depend, depending on, you know, depending on where you go. Because, you know.
Great things about employee navigator, all the, all the different companies that we've talked.
Yes, yes. The, the next, the next piece here, sorry to jump in, Matt, the 1094, 1095 filing piece. Uh, Employee Navigator is really, really good at that. I think that's probably one of the key pieces that removes a lot of the costs, the impact, um, and the, the legwork because you're tracking that and you're able to do things through there. So that is a big piece from a compliance standpoint that, that just takes a lot of it off your plate as well. So that's from an employee navigator standpoint, you're probably hearing that because it just, it tends to. It tends to make your life a little easier.
Right, and um, I believe your pay come now and I don't, they don't. Getting, eventually getting something that works with your payroll would be great, but I think getting the Navigator would probably be the first step. And then, you know, address, addressing that, you know, those things down, down the road. Um, guys, again, I, I, I think you've already reviewed the um, presentation for us. I, we'd really like to open up for questions now, and we can get in more depth. But again, you know, I'm, you're already, you know, you guys were. Lot of us fifteen minutes, I, and I, I consolidated it because I want to respect.
No, thank you very much. Thank you very much for doing that. So you said ninety-four seven is your off, if you, that your bid, and that includes the twenty-five thousand. So if you move to uh Employee Navigator, does that, so your bid is a sixty-nine, seven hundred, that's what?
So, so that would be if, if um, there's, there's gonna be like your Hartford and, and your stuff there. It's going to eliminate a lot of that. So, I mean, we could eliminate up, we could eliminate all that twenty-five, yes.
Yeah, all twenty-five, so.
Yes.
Yeah. And uh, I know you mentioned uh, schools. Do you work with any uh, cities or townships or?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Work with um, White Lake, um, Holly, um, Springfield Township. For be a few, and then I work with like Hamadi Education here, um. Ames, which is another, another charter school. I have a lot of, lot of uh, customers here in Dearborn and, and um.
And how would be that team assigned to City of Duba Heights?
Um, we would have a, a team of.
You, you'd have four basically between, between the two of us as well as two account managers associated to it as well.
Yep.
What would you say your uh, client retention rate is?
Uh, I've lost one in ten years, so.
Very, very good.
Yeah.
High, high nineties.
Yeah.
Eight percent, nine, I mean.
What would you say, what would be the uh, turnaround or to return a call from the city?
Uh, less than two hours.
As I said, everybody's gonna have my cell phone. If, if someone, if someone calls out to see it, one of our CSRs, they don't have, they call me, I'm gonna make it happen. And, and I, and people say, oh, you're gonna give somebody your cell phone. Yeah, I am, because that's, that's how dedicated. You know, I am to my customers and it's not that hard to return a phone call. So.
Any more questions, council members? See, none. Uh, Madam Clerk, we have one uh, from President Sneeze is the uh, Police Patrol President, uh, Union.
Yes, good evening, gentlemen. Uh, the only question I had is in relation to the carving out while simultaneously keeping Blue Cross Blue Shield. Everything that we've been told and what we've learned through our meetings is that when you're with Blue Cross, it's an all-or-nothing. Kind of package with them. So, I'm just curious as to what we would be able to be carving out to actually obtain some savings there.
Yeah, uh, so there's, there's multiple pieces to this because it's, Blue Cross Blue Shield has size limitations that they require to carve different pieces out. So, some of the times when I'm saying carve out, it's not even necessarily away from Blue Cross Blue Shield. It's uh, for example, specialty pharmacy carve-out. You can still do that through Blue Cross Blue Shield. It's just a separate program that they offer. Um, and I, I believe the program is called Sharks, S-H-A-R-X. Uh, that reduces those specialty costs. Typically, it's purchased internationally uh, at UK or Canadian rates. Which is about forty to fifty percent decrease in costs. So, it still may be Blue Cross Blue Shield. It's just a little bit of a tweak to the program that carves it out from your typical insurance.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely.
You, you send out the Cobra notices and the uh, or, or.
Yes.
You, you cover that?
I saw, we'll pay for that fee, yes. That, that fee will be included. We have, we pay for that for however, whoever you're using will look at what you're, what you're paying there. If your current broker's paying for that, we will pick that up.
The, the ten ninety-four C, is that the statement of current coverage that everybody gets?
Yeah. On a, on a annual basis, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, thank you guys again, appreciate it.
Yeah. Did we hit our fifteen minutes? Yeah.
Yes. How you doing?
Remember, we gave you enough for six minutes.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't let my wife love all of these.
No, you're fine.
Oh, yeah.
Please go ahead. You have fifteen minutes and we'll take questions.
Okay, great. Well, you, um, well, I, I thought maybe we'd start and just ask you guys. I mean, this is probably your sixth or seventh and a couple hours on this.
Yeah.
Um, which I'm sure things are starting to blend together and we're getting into the evening. We just met the mayor on his way out. Uh. Is there anything that you'd like us to concentrate on based on where you're at, what you've learned? We understand we're here to help you guys understand who the best partner for, for the city is, and we just want to help.
Well, we've been asking everybody, what do you recommend for a platform? I know we're using Epix right now. Is it Epix?
Epix.
Epix, Epix, Epix.
Epix, and you, what, what are you using Epix for? Is your Ben Admin platform, got it. Man, what would we recommend? So, we're, we're agnostic to your benefit administrative platform. And there is a whole lot of things we would want to know about you guys that we don't know before we would make a recommendation. And I can tell you a little bit out about our HR technology practice. So, we have a group within Lockton and, and they do that at no extra charge. That's all they do for clients is help Mike and I vet those opportunities out. But we need to know who you're using for payroll, HRIS, onboarding, what benefit carriers you, you're working with, which ones you may work with. Do we want to build out a wellness platform? There's a lot of things.
Yep.
That we need to know before we could recommend for you the best technology platform. There's a whole lot of them out there.
Yeah, and, and I think you'll hear, I mean, there's a, there's a lot of brokers and consultants that partner with specific solutions, whether it be. You know, Employee Navigator or some solution like that. I mean, do we, do we use those? Yeah, we can, but we also use about ten other solutions. I think for, I have about twelve clients, and I think I work with eight different benefit administration systems. And it's intentional because we're just trying to pick the one that works best for the client.
That's a great point. And in the public sector, when you're managing it, Blue Cross and the eligibility of their Medicare Advantage product. Which is a very strangely nuanced enrollment process. You really need to make sure that you have the right vendor that understands and has clients in that area. We, we do it with a company called B-Swift pretty well. Um, there's a plan source, so there's platforms out there that can help. Automate most of that process if you're familiar with staging pre-sixty-five retirees. And so, um, yeah, that's a great question, a loaded question. One that, as your partner, we'd be very well equipped to help you with. Um, but we can't really answer that without doing that deep dive. Is that fair?
Yeah.
They're honest.
So, the bottom line is you go with, you start off B-Swift, right? After, that's your platform, you would go, the contract was handed to you?
Does the current, does the current partner that you work with for benefits, is that who brings you that Ben Admin? You use Epix direct, so that's not through a broker or an agent or anything?
Yes, so it's direct, but our plant and our agents overseeing.
Got it. So, so I would, the, the best thing that we would want you to be able to do is, if it's not broken right now, is just stay on Epix while we did that analysis. So, if it's not tied to plant, and even if it is, they probably let you continue that even with a new partner and pay for it. So, I would continue that if it's not broken, as opposed to jam one in and then have to change again when we find out what you need. But if, if, if we needed to do that, I would probably look to Employee Navigator as an interim. Because it's very easy and quick to build and it would work just fine.
Yeah.
So, that would be probably, so first thing I would want to do is try to stay on that current one, do an analysis and pick the best one, implement once. Second, if we had to put in an interim, I would probably use Employee Navigator. If we showed you that functionality and it would meet all your needs.
I mean, I just don't think candidly that Employee Navigator is a great solution for the long term. So, it's like when Rob's saying you stay on your current solution, what I'd hate to see is you leave your current solution, then you go to Navigator. And then you go to a better fit long-term. That's very disruptive for all your people. Um, so I'd rather be thoughtful about looking at all the requirements, understanding which partners are gonna fit the best. Kind of do like a reverse RFP process and then figure out which one is gonna be the best for you.
Is there an urgent need to leave, to leave that platform now?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, we've been looking at it because Howard figures it in the pricing.
Yeah. Oh, into the pricing of the.
Yeah.
I will tell you that my, and Mike and I have been partners for a, a long time and we usually agree on most stuff, but not everything. But usually that gets us to a better place, right, for you guys and the clients. But at the end of the day, I know everybody submitted a price and a bid and you guys are going through a process. But the way I look at a Ben Admin solution or some type of HR technology or anything that we bolt on to your health and welfare program. I think that should be a, a fair market price for that service and it shouldn't be tied to the broker consulting services. We get paid to advise our clients to service their business, to look at their data and make good recommendations. For our public sector clients, we get, we get paid to build relationships and meet with their collective bargaining agreements and union heads. Share that transparent data with them so that ultimately you guys can have the best benefit for, for the best price for the city. Um, and we don't, I, all things being equal, I don't really like packaging other services into that. We have a robust amount of consulting services and things that we do, like that HR technology group that, that's no extra charge. But that software, you should be paying directly to that software provider for that, in my opinion.
I mean, we're, we're, sorry, you know, we interrupt.
No, I'm just gonna ask you, uh, I mean, we had already about one, two, three, four, five people. And I'm just gonna be plain honest, our price difference between you guys and the highest one is like seventy thousand. Can you tell me why?
We're seventy thousand higher than the highest one. You know, when we respond to an RFP, we look at other like clients, we look at the standard carrier commissions that we would bring in, just like your incumbent does today. And we guess on that based on the premium numbers. And we'd much rather come back to you after we know what's under the hood and look at that and say, guess what, it's a hundred and forty thousand dollars in revenue, not a hundred and seventy-five. So, we don't really know what's there right now. We'd rather start there. If, if you like us, you meet us and you want to negotiate on price, we get to a spot. But we'd rather start with a, a number that's higher than what's there and work down from it.
Yeah.
That's just sort of our philosophy in being transparent negotiating. And I, I think everybody's guessing at what that number is, and I don't think very many will come back after the fact. If the, the, if the Blue Cross Commission and your Life and Disability Commission's more, they're probably not gonna come back and say, hey, we're gonna give some of this back. Right? We're, we're gonna disclose that, you know, and move forward.
Got you. Uh, what would you say uh, the percentage of, of your clients are municipal clients?
Well, I mean, so we're locked in, we just went over four billion in revenue. We've got fifty thousand clients in the US. In Michigan, we're newer, we've been at it for about five years in Michigan. We just, we just hit twenty-five million in revenue here and uh, benefits consulting. Uh, we're probably three percent of that business in Michigan is municipalities. And Mike and I work with, with those municipalities directly.
Yeah.
And I think we left them as references.
Yes.
As well, but um, we have a, some areas of the country where we have much larger public sector practices and, and uh, and businesses. But I'd be guessing, but I'd say certainly single digits. We have a lot of private sector clients as well.
I would, I would guess ten if I had to put a number on it. And we, we think the diversification of how we provide service is important. Cause I think while working with municipalities and understanding what the dynamic like is, is very important. But I think working in the private sector and understanding what the rest of the market is doing is gonna shape what you guys are gonna look at and what you're gonna consider going forward.
How, how long you guys been in business?
Since nineteen sixty-six.
Sixty-six, yeah. So, what would you say your client retention rate was being?
It's ninety, ninety-two.
Uh, I think it's higher than that, ninety-five. It's a moving target. We disclose it every year. It was ninety-seven for years and years and years. I think it's ninety-four, ninety-four right now. So, yeah. We do a lot of business with private equity firms as well, which actually increases that. Because of the amount of acquisitions and divestitures where there's already relationships. So, as we've done more and more work there, we've seen more, a, a little bit lower client retention. Um.
And you guys are located in Birmingham.
Yeah, we have an office in Birmingham, we have an office in Detroit and Grand Rapids in Michigan, so.
Also, members, any more questions?
What, what, what else have you guys talked about? What, what have you heard that's been, what, what you think maybe is a, a very valuable benefit?
To be, to be honest with you, the same questions we just asked you, we asked the rest of the other five.
Yeah, okay.
So, uh, nobody's uh, nobody's getting the hammer thrown at them.
No, you guys are being too easy on us.
No, no, it's not that. So eventually we're gonna have to go down from seven to a certain amount to choose a.
Sure.
Choose a clientele. But I mean, I like your honesty saying that, where, you know, you're starting from, you're disclosing everything.
I like the honesty.
Yeah, that I do want.
The only way we know how to operate. If you want to call any of those clients that we work with, they'll tell you the same.
I will.
Yeah. You guys came in here very honest. I appreciate that more than anything.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam Clerk, just have a question from uh, President's News, uh, Police Union.
Good evening, gentlemen. My only question I have is, I know you guys have stated that your experience is primarily in the, in the private sector. What experience do you guys have? And I know you, you're a small amount new here, new here in Michigan.
Yep.
What is your experience with collective bargaining agreements and things of that nature when in relation to the municipality?
Yeah, so I've got a lot of experience working with collective bargaining agreements. This is Rob Vogel. I, uh, I actually started my career with Cross here in Michigan where I led. Um, a large UAW contingent, participated in um, negotiations for years there. And then I, I actually worked with uh, a couple of very similar in size uh municipalities. One really close, I think in terms of the way that you guys are organized, is Waterford Township. We've got about two hundred and eighty active employees, uh, nine different bargaining units. Uh, we work direct with their police and. From, from my perspective, um, and this is paramount for us too, because this is a partnership. If we're able to, you know, stay on the list and, and hopefully partner with you guys down the road is. The same thing that you just said you appreciated about us, honesty, transparent data. And building relationships with police, fire, Teamsters, court, management. Like making sure that people know that we are here to provide everybody the same data, the same information. We work for the entire city. Um, and we want to help guide good decisions and fair bargaining. Um, you know, to make, to make the city a better place to be. I mean, so, and, and you know, if you, if you called Waterford Township or Harrison Township or some of those clients. Where I've been, yeah, I've been working with those, those uh, those uh, townships for. I think Harrison Township's my client for over fifteen years and Waterford probably ten now. And we've just built, it takes time too, to build those relationships and build that trust. Um, but we've been able to do a lot of great things in those communities, so um, help with their OPEB liability. Um, get rid of, you know, where we felt there was ways to help, help uh, set benefits up so people can save for the future. Because we know they're gonna keep getting worse. Unfortunately, the cost continues to go up. So, did I answer your question?
Uh, you absolutely did. And, and just to, just to piggyback on what you said, I, I appreciate your transparency and your honesty as well. Cause I, I personally have a strong fear of a lot of these other companies that what their bid came in at. We have a very complex city and structure and with our multiple unions and our CBAs that the. And self-admittedly, most of them said that they don't know what's going on in our city. They don't have the numbers. And I, I have a fear that they may be coming back asking for more once they actually see what's going on. Uh, my only other question is, uh, when it kind of, you said that you worked at BCBS and. On your advisement, would, do you typically advise your clients to stay with the current system that they're in? Only reason I ask is we have a very, and not only is it contractually mandated, but.
Sure.
We have very good benefits when it comes to our insurance and that is something that all of us in the union are very strong. And making sure doesn't get affected in this change.
Uh, that's a great, great question. I think, I actually believe that it's really important to have um, carrier agnostic. Agreements in place uh, for a number of reasons. And that doesn't mean that I would advise a client to leave. And actually, both of those communities I just mentioned are with Blue Cross. They do a great job. Their Medicare Advantage product is, although it's starting to go up. Is done really well financially over the last fifteen years. But having language in a CBA that gets shared with, with carriers and the Blues, it, it takes all of our leverage away. So, you're gonna hire someone to partner with you that needs leverage um, on your behalf, right? We want to negotiate the best possible benefits for you guys. We work for the cities, we work for our privately held clients. And so, we're in the practice of advising you guys in how to help us create leverage to do our job. So that we can make decisions that are founded in data and our experience. And so, I, I, my dad was there forty years, he retired from there. I didn't fit in quite as well to the culture at Blue Cross. I, I think my personality was maybe a little bit abrasive because I just get caught up on facts a lot, but um. You know, I, hopefully that answers the question. I mean, it's, it's made the best person for, for, for you guys and your people win the deal and. And, and that's who should be paying claims on your behalf and administering your program. And Mike does an amazing job and that's why we partner together of really using data to custom build things too. So we don't have to do everything with any one carrier or partner.
Yeah, I mean, uh, two things unique about us is, you know, when it, when it comes to working with self-funded, self-funded clients, we use a data warehouse that's included within our fee and we're allowed to break down by all the different units that you have within the city. So we could understand clearly what's happening in one versus another. So we could go to you and say, well, this particular group is having issue with preventive care screenings. So how do we target communications to this specific group to increase preventive, preventive care screenings? You know, another one might be obesity is really high in this group. What can we do to target obesity from a communication and program perspective?
Muscles, skeleton, police and fire. I mean.
So, I mean, the, the, the sky's the limit and back to your comment on agnostic, like administrative fee is how Blue Cross is making majority of their money. Money from you today. But if you have these agreements that dictate Blue Cross is the only carrier that's allowed to be offered, Blue Cross is not gonna be very competitive with the administrative fee that they offer. So if we open up the books and are able to get competitive quotes, while we ultimately might stay with Blue Cross, at least we're able to push them because they know that there's real competition at play. Um, and that's just one way of reducing fixed costs for you all.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, you've probably heard this from other organizations, but Blue Cross came to us, I don't know, maybe ten years ago and said, you, if you just offer Blue Cross, nobody else, get rid of HAP, get rid of the other companies, we'll save you tons of money. And, and, and I was with HAP. HAP was a good provider. I have a sister that was a doctor at Henry Ford. So you're saying if we open that up, we'll, we'll do better, we'll get a.
No, no, not necessarily. I, I understand what you're saying and at your guys' current size, I'm not saying we couldn't look at that and it couldn't be financially advantageous. But if you started to offer slice offerings, let's say we wanted to offer HAP and Blue Cross alongside each other, you'd end up with one risk pool that was performing differently than the other one. And you'd likely make one more unaffordable than the other. And that's not truly the way they should be behaving the market. Because if, if we were ten thousand employees, we could have a slice offering, we have enough scale in each of those plans or pools that they run side by side and they perform like they should in the market. So Blue Cross wasn't wrong when they said, we want the whole thing. At your size, it's hard to do a group slice offering. But what we're saying, having a carrier contract that's, or a, a union contract that's carrier agnostic is we wanna go out and be able to look at those numbers. We wanna look at HAP, we wanna look at Priority Health. We wanna look at a TPA where we can build a network or lease Blue Cross's network. You know, there's a million ways we can deliver great benefits to your people. And we wanna create a marketplace and then use it as leverage to get you the best deal. And if the, if the Blues knows you can't move their kind, they're not performing great financially right now. I don't know how much you guys have heard, their middle market insured business is really performing poorly. Um, their, their pharmacy contract hasn't been competitive. And so they know they don't have to come to the table and drop their rates. We, 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 we need leverage to get you guys the best deal. That doesn't mean we're gonna fire them. We, we very well may wanna continue to use them. But we wanna see what the market looks like and then be able to tell you, tell them, look, we have the ability to pick the best, the best horse here and you're not it unless you sharpen your pencil.
Thank you. Any more questions? See none. Thank you so much.
You too. Probably should have introduced ourselves. I'm Rob Vogel.
Nice to meet you guys.
And you guys on the, on the TV as well.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you so much. Definitely will do. Good evening, Mel. Best for best.
I think we.
Yes, I sure am sweet.
Yeah, Maria, I've never met, but that gentleman I did.
Is there a way for us to, um, just?
We know Plant Moran. So I can skip the who are we page.
Well.
I know Plant Moran.
Let's see. Sure if this is working or not. Do I have to press?
Yes.
Let's see.
I'll clean those veins and stuff going into the garbage can and I'll be crying all night.
I wish I had the space to.
Wish I'd had space for one of them. I'd take one.
Even the smallest ones. Isn't that amazing? My stuff is inside there.
It, it's amazing the power that it will set up.
Please go ahead.
We are ready.
We have fifteen minutes. Good evening.
Take questions.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Um, I know you've been in this room for a long time right now, so we'll try and get through this as quickly as possible. Uh, my name is Jonathan Trianfi. I'm one of the partners of Plant Moran Group Benefit Advisors. We're an entity of Plant Moran. And I have Maria here with me. She's the account manager that's assigned to the city's account. Um, for those of you that don't know, we are the incumbent um, for the services that we've been talking about today. So a little bit about us. We, like I said, we're an affiliated entity of Plant Moran. So we are owned fifty percent by Plant Moran, fifty percent by myself and my partner. Um, we've been serving employers for about twenty years on the, in, in benefits consulting. Um, just for reference, um, of those twenty years, we've been serving the city now for about thirteen of those years. Um, we have about a hundred and twenty-five years of combined experience on the team. Um, and I think really what sets us apart is that we are truly independent. And what I mean by that is we are beholden to certain rules because we're part of an accounting firm that most insurance brokers are not. Um, and that means we have to work entirely for the benefit of our clients. And we have to separate ourselves from any conflict of interest that would be perceived as us losing our independence, okay? If, and that's because we're an accounting firm and we're held to certain standards that most other employers are not. Um, we're also transparent, data-driven, and our approach is always collaborative and client-focused. So again, I know you've been in here for a long time, so I'm gonna add a little levity to the conversation here. So a lot of people wonder, why, why do insurance brokers exist in the first place? Um, but I'm gonna say, I'm gonna answer the question, why do we exist? Um, so if you look at, if you look at the presentation, um, I always like to joke, what's more difficult? Healthcare, health insurance, or rocket science? So Amazon, JP Morgan, and Berkshire Hathaway came together to form a company that was going to solve the US healthcare problem. And they failed and failed quite classically, okay? But Jeff Bezos sent a, a rocket ship into the outer, outer space, yeah? That's why we exist. Healthcare is complicated. It's, and it's becoming even more complicated. So the other reason we exist, and this leads into a little bit more about the independence. If you take a look at the US healthcare system right now, it's the employer-based healthcare system or health insurance system is made up of four parties. Employers, the city, insurance brokers like us, insurance companies, and then the providers, doctors and hospitals. Three of those parties benefit when costs go up. Only one of those parties is harmed when costs go up. So what our promise to our clients is, is that we're gonna separate ourselves. We're gonna align ourselves more with our, our clients, employers, than with the insurance companies and the medical providers. Okay, it evens the playing field. We're, and we're not out to make those people to be out bad guys, but the playing field needs to be a bit more evened out. So what are our advantages? Um, first and foremost, we're a one-stop shop. We handle everything from routine, day-to-day support for the employees and the retirees. We have all of our financial underwriting and risk analysis in-house. So that's, that's part of the industry that I grew up in, so the numbers are kinda my thing. Um, I, I still like to do them, um, when my team allows me to. Um, we also deal with the benefits technology support. Um, so some of you may not be aware, but we actually helped install the benefits administration system that's still in use right now. We helped the city install that when everything was still being done by paper. And then the last thing, and I think this is again, something that definitely separates us, is we do all the compliance work in-house too. And that includes the ACA filing. And what I mean by the ACA filing is every year employers need to file forms with, with the IRS around how health insurance is being offered to employees. And in the city's case, because you're self-insured, those same forms have to be provided to non-Medicare retirees. And I'll, I'll bring up a small nuance. So I, I, I know a lot of brokers suggest that employers should use payroll systems for that, that service. Inherently retirees are not in payroll because they're not on payroll. So to use a service, a payroll service, to meet a compliance obligation for a group of people that aren't inherent in that platform will never work. So the city has to be diligent about how you're completing and how you're staying compliant with that obligation. Missing on that can be catastrophic, cause that is where, if you've ever heard of the pay or play penalties associated with Affordable Care Act, if you miss on that reporting, the penalties can be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. So a couple of our other institutional, or our other advantages, institutional knowledge. I mentioned earlier, I myself personally have been working on um, this account for over thirteen years. Um, uh, so Councilman Muscat, you, you mentioned that you've met me before. I've been in this room before it was renovated, um, plenty of times presenting.
Greenfield Village.
We also have a lot of public sector experience. Um, so I myself work on a number of different municipalities. For example, we are working with uh, near neighbors like Westland and, and City of Wayne. Um, and the other thing that is that I, I think is really important is over the years, we have developed a very strong working rapport with key stakeholders like police and fire. We have taken the time to understand collective bargaining agreements, um, understand what they expect and how they operate. They may not always like what we have to tell them, but we have, we are working from a position of trust with those folks. And lastly, transparency, and I can't stress this enough. This is where I think we truly separate ourselves. Like I mentioned before, separating ourselves from those conflicts of interest that are inherent in the insurance industry. Most insurance brokers, um, the way they're compensated, their financial incentives. If you're not, if you're not monitoring those things, um, you can find yourself being advised in a way that's in the interest of the insurance broker and not necessarily the city. So I'm gonna um, lay out our fees um, really quickly. Uh, I know this is in the proposal. Um, most of our fees come from a directly invoiced uh, fee, not commissions. But one of the things that I wanted to mention is that as commissions change, so if we get more in commissions, for whatever reason, we will lower our fees to reflect the total, the total agreed-upon fee um, in our proposal. Many insurance brokers will guarantee a fee, but if they sell you more insurance, they're gonna get paid more. We do not operate like that. We operate under an agreed-upon fee. And if we get more commissions, then we're gonna lower what we're directly invoicing the city. Um, up on the screen again is our, is our proposed fees for both twenty-twenty-six and twenty-twenty-seven. So again, we're, we are guaranteeing that fee for two years. The only thing we can't guarantee is what, how it's made up. So like I mentioned before, if Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan, for example, pays us a greater commission, we're gonna turn around and lower our, the directly invoiced fee to land at the, at the um, agreed-upon fee that, that's guaranteed there on the screen. So the last thing I wanted to mention is that part of our fees currently, we are paying for the city's benefits administration platform. If the city wants to use a different platform and we, we have a platform that we, that we license, that we can provide, we are happy to lower our fees by, by whatever our expense is reduced by. So if we don't have to pay for that fee, we will absolutely reduce our fee dollar for dollar. Yeah, so if we're not paying for that platform anymore, we will reduce our fee dollar for dollar and we will put that in writing and promise it. Um, the, it's the same goes for the ACA reporting that I mentioned before. We are providing that service to the city. If the city wishes to use another third party, we're happy to, we're happy to lower our fees again for, if we're not performing that service for the city. Um, there's a couple of things that I wanna point out. I know a lot of brokers have benefits administration platforms that they can provide to their clients for free. I wanna be clear that we have been through a lot of that already with the city. Um, and have evaluated other benefits administration platforms, include the one that we license. Our concern is that if we come, the city's benefits are complex enough, especially with the retirees and some of the nuances of working with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan, that if we were to use a less flexible system, there is a strong likelihood that we would break some of the other operations associated with the day-to-day benefits administration with the city. For example, right now, the benefits administration platform feeds data electronically to Blue Cross Blue Shield. to Blue Cross Blue Shield Michigan. If we're working off of a platform that can't accommodate the way that Blue Cross needs to receive that data, we will move back into having to manually key in data to their system, which can it it opens up a lot more room for error, human error. So just some things to think about there. I'm not going to belabor a lot of the details, but I wanted to let you know that we've been through that process before and come up with a, came to the conclusion that there were more cons of moving off that system than benefits.
Basically, you're recommending that to stay with that system?
I think that we need, if 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 the city wants to move off that system, I think there needs to be a more thorough review process in order to make sure whatever system we move to.
That basically compare apples.
Yes, exactly. The other thing is, whenever you, whenever you transition off a benefits administration platform like that, you need a very well-defined transition plan. Because if we turn one system off before the new system is live, then we could be losing data continuity. For example, the ACA reporting, I mentioned that, that we need data for the retirees. If we lose data mid-year and we don't have that anymore, we can no longer complete those ACA reports. And then there's exposure for, you know, in terms of ACA penalties. So there's just a lot to think about, and there needs to be a very detailed transition plan in order to to accommodate that.
You know, I have a question with director. All the other presenters, they didn't mention anything about the ACA report. They did?
Yeah, we did hear.
It's it's a fairly simple thing.
Uh, council members, any more questions?
If if we did get off the system that we're on now, is there one that you would recommend?
Yeah, there there are two systems. One is local. It's a company out of Troy called Accordware that has the same type of flexibility. Um, for example, the Clinton Township is using that platform. City of Trenton is using that platform. Um, the other one is Benteck. So Benteck, um, I believe is used by Dearborn, City of Dearborn, City of Westland. Those systems are really geared to accommodate municipalities.
What's the cost for each? What's the cost?
We would have, we would have to get a proposal. It would be on par with the cost of.
I I know that as a retiree, my union retiree, going through some of that stuff, you know, navigating through, you know, all the software and getting into the right spots to call what number and it it's very frustrating. And and I I I want our people to be able to log on and look at their stuff and feel comfortable getting their stuff and getting your questions answered because, man, you could spend some hours doing it. I did that today, man.
Thank you for doing your open enrollment.
It's just not open enrollment. I, we got a WEX card through for UAW, and I was denied service for it, and I tried to call somebody to find out why. I spent an hour and a half doing it.
Yeah, that that's one of the reasons here at the city for active employees, we deployed a solution called Healthjoy. Navigating the current ecosystem of health insurance, really employee benefits in general, has become so complicated. The Healthjoy platform is meant to provide a one-stop-shop kind of concierge support program for the employees of the city.
And if an employee should call about a problem, dude, how soon can they get help?
Right away, immediately.
The phone is answered right away for you to get help.
Wait time.
All your benefits and, sorry, Jonathan.
Go ahead.
Healthjoy is a, um, yeah, it's a platform that holds all your benefits in it. It's called the Benefits Wallet. They can look at everything you have and go through everything you have. It's meant to be easier for you for billing issues, claims issues, the things, the very things that you're talking about right now. So you're not turned into this abyss of down this phone queue, that phone queue, because that's very, very frustrating. And that's, and the city provides that to you employees, and it's underutilized.
Yeah, especially for the for the employees that are currently working. They don't have that time to stand on the phone.
That's exactly why you have signed up for Healthjoy and you've enrolled.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
We use that system, Ray, and I'm helping people and stuff with it. It's just impossible. Just my last, my last camera or comment or question. I mean, beside one other presenter, the difference between you and the highest one is almost 90,000.
Correct.
So.
So. So here's, here's how the how we're different. So I men, I mentioned that our fees are guaranteed and that we're completely transparent. Many brokers will provide what we would call acquisition pricing, and then they will work their way up to or beyond the fees that we have presented by selling additional insurance and and generating additional commissions. The other thing is, it's very likely that those groups are not disclosing their bonuses and overrides. Insurance carriers pay bonuses and overrides based on how much business an insurance broker has with one insurance carrier. If they don't have to disclose that, but I am, I'm being disadvantaged by the fact that we're being more open with how we're being compensated. I would I would bet my career on the fact that most of the others that came into this room today are not disclosing their bonuses and overrides because they're not legally obligated to do it. We do it because it's the right thing to do.
Cool. So any more questions?
How long would that price be good for? Is there a time limit?
Two years.
Five-year, a five-year contract would be all.
Yeah, so the the truth is, over the years, I think the largest increase that we've ever passed year over year to the city in terms of our compensation is 3%. So and and we will put that in writing. Um, and frankly, the truth is the the relationship is long enough where if you need something from us, I feel like you you all can ask for it. We have other services. Plant Moran has other services that we provide to the city.
Believe it, we know.
Yeah. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing these days.
Not a good thing.
It's a big chunk of our expenses.
Yeah, so if you need something and want to continue working with us, all you have to do is ask.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, if you can, M U, Mr. Hall, I think he had something to say. But, uh.
Phil Hall.
Barry was unmute.
Thank you very much, Honorable Council Chair, uh, Honorable Council Members. I know you've been here for a long time tonight, so I'll keep it very brief. Uh, but after seeing all these presentations, I just wanted to state a couple of facts for the record. The complexity of our healthcare benefits program, uh, as you all know, covers many different bargaining units with several plans that are specified by contract language. As some of the more tenured council members uh, will know, there has been arbitration awards that have been granted based on coverage changes in the past. Uh, healthcare benefit levels will be the driver for recruitment and retention of employees in the next five to 10 years, even greater than wages. Folks are going to be leaving places to find better benefits. I would ask that you exercise a great deal of wisdom with this decision as it will affect every employee and every retiree in this city. I'm humbly requesting that the employee unions are provided the information that you have all received to review that was not provided to us before tonight, and that we, as the unions, are in included in this vital decision. It is understood that change can be a good thing, but change simply for the sake of change can be catastrophic to a community. I thank you all for your time and consideration, and I am happy to speak with any of you at any time regarding this issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, President Sineer.
Yes, hello again, council members. I just wanted to echo what the best union president, Phil Hall, stated. That's all I have to say tonight. Thank you all for your time and everything. That's right. Have a great night. Thank you.
Feel free to call me. I don't know if he still can hear me and give me your ideas to both he and Phil.
All right.
Sounds good.
Thank you so much. Have a nice evening.